Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the March 26, 2024 Public Hearing on Proposed Property Tax Levy fiscal year 2024-25, and I will turn it over to Vice President Klaassen at this time.
Now is the time and place for the public hearing on the district proposed property tax levy FY2425. The Board of Directors set the date for this public hearing on February 27, 2024. Notice the public hearing was published in the Iowa City Press-Citizen on March 16, 2024. Are there any questions or comments from the public related to the proposed property tax levy FY2425?
If there are, please come to the podium and state your full name. Hearing none, I will close this public hearing. And please bear with us, we need to log out. Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward to the podium.
My name is Nancy Carlson. I live at 1002 Jefferson. I have no children. I have no grandchildren. But when I grew up, my community made sure that they had the money to enable me to have a good education. Although I have no children, I am concerned about the education of the children in this community. I am concerned about lowering the taxes and how that would, the tax levy, and how that would affect the children in this community. I want to do for the kids of this community what the adults of my community did when I was growing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Please come forward.
So Mark Gocken, 1985, who here, everybody? So this is a question actually in kind of response to the woman before me. So it talks about a tax reduction, but I understand that the notifications that went out in the mail were sent out prematurely, and the formulas may have been incorrect, assessments, the algorithms that were used may have been incorrect.
I will turn that over to Chief Director Office of Curd. I'm not aware of anything that should be incorrect. So I'm not aware of any issues that could have been raised in the system if they did. It would be at the state level, but we haven't been notified of any issues. I'll follow up if I can.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Final call for any additional comments or questions. I will now close this public hearing. Directors, please log out and log back in. Thank you to those attending in person tonight and those staying engaged at watching our meeting at a later time. The public is reminded that if they wish to speak during community comment, they will need to fill out a speaker form located in the lobby on the table and turn it in to Board Secretary Kim Coben seated at the end of the table on my left. Comments will take place during the designated community comment portion of our meeting. Before we dive into tonight's agenda, I want to take a moment to introduce those seated at the table with me. To my right, we have Superintendent Degner, Directors Abraham, Eastham, and Williams. To my left, we have Vice President Klaassen, Directors Finch, Lingo, and Board Secretary And with that, the first item on our agenda is the Education Showcase and Equity Update. Who am I turning over? Thank you, Director Gray.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Director. I just want to introduce Brad Kelly. He's our equity, he's our RJ Coordinator, and he's going to come to you today with a group of students, I believe from both Ben Allen and Hooper. Was it just Ben Allen? Just Ben Allen today. And those are our equity, those are our Empathy Rockets. And so this comes out of our Restorative Justice work, and you all have heard of us doing some Restorative Justice work at the middle schools or high schools and a little bit at the elementary schools. This is some of the empathy work, the kindness work that's happening in a proactive way on the Restorative Practices side, because all the work that we do is not always encircled. Does that make sense? And so this is some of the work that Brad Kelly and some of our Equity Team members are doing in order to help work with the students to prepare them before they get to junior high, before they get to high school, so that they're already aware of some of the foundations of Restorative Practices. And so I'm going to turn it over and let them speak for themselves, since we'll talk further through our Empathy Rockets and Brad Kelly.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to read this presentation.
We're the Empathy Rockets. It's here listening from Ben Allen Elementary School. We came around from 2022 all the way back when I didn't think about this, but here we are. After that, we had our first project, Garner, where we visited and presented, presented, and they loved it. Then several other elementaries, and now we have over 60 kids in the district that would like to, that would like to join or make their own empathy team. Our vision is to make the district a better place to learn, and a better place to learn also means better education, which boils out in bigger world once we become adults. We want to make the environment a more enjoyable and likable place to be, and most of the members of Empathy Rockets have been feeling these emotions, where they do not have an entirely secure environment. But that is the reason that we have made all this happen, to stop those emotions and replace them with happiness. A few rule of common sense that most of us hold above, but we don't even make that rule. We're so common in our community.
About, about 20 years ago, we had been sitting in our class when the district's executive justice coordinator, Mr. Kelly, pulled us out of the room. He held a meeting with fellow classmates of 2029 from Hoover Elementary. We sat and then we discussed plans to recreate what benefits had come from their service and influence where we are today.
At this time, it was just four of us from our school. That was the first time we had experienced such leadership. Mr. Kelly shared my idea of we expanded and shaped ourselves and did what we are today. At this point, we had about 15 kids in the group making this official.
We then named ourselves the Empathy Rockets. Laila Jayce Jeffrey and myself, along with Mr. Ewalt, four teachers in the senior alley, met there in the summer of 2023, planned for the 2023-24 school year. We now stand with nearly 20 members and new people joining free clothing.
Later on, we went to Garner.
To start with the year, we had a blanket drive in which we all would gather with blankets and bed sheets to deliver to the local homeless shelter.
Later, we went to Garner Elementary and presented toy group of about 20 kids. After that, we went to Brentwood and Lemmy Elementary, who would like for us to return for another visit. As we stand here before you, we are ready on going to many other schools in the north and west sides of Iowa.
Our vision is to spread the harm of impact of our laws throughout the district and encourage you to join us, our pathway to distance. Great communities that expand kindness and empathy throughout schools have a purpose in speaking to future members of Class 2030, 2031. That would join in this group is a great opportunity to expand our audience, grow a more life for the community, and help us transition to a new school, no matter what part of town we live in.
We hope we have another amazing opportunity like this, and to hopefully visit more schools and grow our community.
You spreading kindness is our number one priority, priority, and we hope this slide has encouraged your change of path. Again, we believe common sense is rooted in empathy and kindness. We thank you for listening and encourage you to show empathy.
These are all the Empathy Rockets students in Empathy Rockets currently. Maximus McGee, Ellie Weinberger, Paxton Wood, Lila Time, William Brex, Jace Manson, Lincoln Burnett, Brian, Lauren, Jeffrey Garcia, Nada, Tyson Finch, Siri Jones, Colin Wolf, Jack Hegwell, Lola Williams, and Vanya James.
Thank you so much. That was inspiring, inspiring. And I don't know if other directors have anything to add to that, but I really do appreciate you all taking time out, especially on a school day to come visit with us.
I want to thank too Principal Ewalt for his cooperation. That's what helps us to get in and out of there and go to student's other abilities.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause.
Strikes me that this is a wonderful group of students. I was only impressed that they had heard of something like that. Our kids wouldn't have done that. So I really appreciate your coming tonight. We really appreciate your work as a group of students in this very important activity and mission that you have for the entire district.
Thank you. Next up is community comment. As a reminder, if you would like to make a comment, please hand the speaker form to Record Secretary Kim Coben seated on the end of the table at my left. Thank you for your interest in the Iowa City Community School District and for your willingness to share your comments. You are reminded to give your name, address, and topic on which you demand to speak about. During community comment, persons may speak to the board about topics relevant to the district. Speakers who make comments are reminded that they are responsible for their own statements, and they may be subject to legal action for those which include hate speech and that are threatening, harassing, or defamatory in nature. It is expected that speakers will address the board and each other with stability and abide by the stated time limits. All community comment directed at non-agenda items and agenda items shall take place at the beginning of the meeting and shall be limited to four minutes per speaker and five minutes for speakers who have the assistance of an interpreter. Speaker's time limit will be displayed on the screen above Board Secretary Ms. Coben. The community comment period shall not be limited to ensure that those wanting to speak tonight have an opportunity to do so. The speaker's name will be called, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize now. Please correct me before you begin to speak. The board will not engage in any discussion during public comment. The role of the board during this time is to listen. Any individual who does not abide by these rules or otherwise disrupts the meeting may be asked to leave or refer to law enforcement. And with that, our first speakers are Marcella Portop and Metta Flores.
I'm going to provide my name is Marcella Portop. I have a one kids in the Hills Elementary.
My name is Metta Flores, and we are here to talk about Hills Elementary. I live in Coles, Better Park.
Muchisimas gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí frente a ustedes. En la escuela de Hills hemos encontrado un espacio donde nuestros hijos son tratados con respeto y dignidad, porque es un lugar donde los ayudan a enaltecer y sentirse orgullosos de su cultura y sus raíces, como fue el día que festejamos el mes de la herencia hispana celebrado el mes de septiembre del 2023. Como dice el reporte de Iowa Latin Project del año 2024, a los latinos después me van a ciudades más pequeñas, comunidades más establecidas que proporcionaban recursos bilingues. Queremos presentar nuestra petición con más de 900 firmas para pedirles que tomen más tiempo para tomar esta decisión tan importante sobre el futuro de Hills Elementary. Hay generaciones de familias involucradas en la escuela primaria de Hills, y nosotros queremos formar parte de esta historia también. Les queremos recordar la diferencia entre equidad e igualdad. Es importante darle a los niños lo que necesitan. El futuro de nuestro estado depende de nuestros hijos. Esta noche, el Distrito Escolar de Iowa City tiene la oportunidad de cambiar el futuro no solo de la comunidad latina, pero también de la comunidad de la de Hills.
Now, I play in English. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here in front of you. In the Hills Elementary School, we have found a space where our children are treated with respect and dignity, because it is, is a place where they help them to excel and feel proud of their roots and future, as was the day that we celebrated the Month of Hispanic Heritage, celebrated in the month of September 2023. As stated in the Iowa Attendance Project Report for the year 2024, Latinos did better in the small, in the smaller cities with more established communities that provide bilingual resources. We want to present our petition with more than 900 senators to ask you to take more time to make this very important decision about the future of Hills Elementary School. There are generations of families involved in Hills Elementary School, and we want to be part of this history too. We want to remind you of the difference between equity and equality. It is important to give children what they need, meeting students' needs where they are at. The future of our state depends on our children. Tonight, the Iowa City School District has the opportunity to change the future of not only the Latino community, but also the entire Hills community.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Kelly. I'm here to speak because you are considering closing a school. My husband and I came here in 1972. He worked for this district for 33 years as a teacher and an administrator. We have two sons. We both went through this school district and both graduated from City High. We're invested in this district. We have now been surprised to learn that the best part of our lives is just beginning. We're grandparents, and we have a first grader at Hills Elementary. So I want to remind you of a couple of things that we think are very important for your consideration in this decision that you're about to make. First of all, there's the community of the school. It's a small school. I had concerns. I don't anymore. Those children are each other's family. They support each other. They take care of each other. They know each other. My first grade granddaughter plays with kids in second, third, fourth grade. They're important to each other. She can tell you stories about classmates and how she's learning Spanish, and she's helping them learn English. To me, that's a learning community. Those children come to that building in the morning to learn, and they're learning more than academics. They're learning about being social human beings and citizens of the world. I also want you to think about the community of Hills. Hills is a small town. It's the only school there. Closing that building, I think, is going to devastate the community. My son and his dog, his wife, excuse me, she's my daughter-in-law, just bought their house two years ago. And having a school right there was part of the consideration. They are choosing to live in a small town with the environment that's created by a small town. And now you're talking about closing the one and only school in that community. The last thing I want to talk about, I think, is my, is my grand job and the children that go to that school. They're going to be upset if they don't already know about it, and we have tried hard not to talk to our granddaughter about it very much. It's upsetting. A new building this year, strangers, different ways of getting to school, new rules. Kids are important human beings, and that's why we're all here. I think last I'd like to remind you that I think your communication could have been a whole lot better about this whole situation. My daughter-in-law is pretty on top of things, and she learned about this whole process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Phil Hemingway, 3852 Liberty Drive. We made a commitment to Hills. Two of you were at the meeting that I was at when I was on the board, and we were in, we committed to Hills for the long term. I don't know your new financial officer, but I'm sure he warned you about this, and it wasn't just a week ago, or two weeks ago, or a month ago. This is a consent agenda. This is the ballgame right here. And how many of you go through it? I was financial officer for the board, and I went through it every two weeks for four years, every receipt, every check. And I know some of you, when you first got on, didn't do it until you got shamed into doing it. But it'd be anywhere from an hour and a half to two or three hours, four hours sometimes. There's $8.7 million in here that you're spending in this last two-week period, if I can get it. Now, when Craig Hansel was in charge, this was on the front page. It's buried in the middle. It's not very clear for a novice, even someone who's spent a lot of time going over it. But you guys have failed the community. Your job, you are the last vote to approve every penny that's spent in this district. And I probably voted no more than anybody in, in recent history when I was on the board. And talking with a fellow board member, the only votes that I regret are the ones that I voted yes. You guys have failed the community. You've got to live up to your promises. You made a commitment. We made a commitment. The community made a commitment. And I grew up in, between Morrison Oasis, and let me tell you, Hills is a big town. It's not small. It's got business. It's got entrepreneurship. It's got restaurants. It's walkable and bikeable. I remember when those were buzzwords. Oh, my God. We got to make sure our shoes, our, our schools are accessible, that people can walk to school. I don't think there's anywhere in Hills you can't walk to school. We've got to live up to our commitment, because if we don't, what other word are you going to break next? How can anybody ever trust us? And it's disheartening that, you know, no county supervisor has voiced an opinion on this. They're sitting on the sidelines. I mean, we have got to recognize Iowa is, is rural. Even though we're in a big urban area, we're a rural state. And Hills is a vital, necessary part of the educational experience in our community, and we've got to live up to it. I remember JP, you spoke very eloquently at one time about how we invested in small elementary schools, not because they were efficient, because of the product it turned out. And we know that it was more expensive, but it was a quality product. Doggone it, you're going the wrong way. We fought this during all that planning and development on the elementary systems, where they came in with the big, efficient models. And we said no to the 500 and 600 elementary schools, because kids fall through the cracks. Please live up to your commitments, be true to your word, be true to the community, recognize that it's the quality product we put out, and that doggone it, there's savings to be had. And if you go to a small town board meeting, they spend all the time on the consent agenda. You're going to approve this without a no vote or without any discussion.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Tilly. Next up, we have Michael Tilly, followed by Tim Kemp. Michael Tilly, followed by Tim Kemp.
My name is Michael Tilly, and I live at eleven oh eight Carver Street in Iowa City. As part of the recommended budget cuts, the Iowa City Community School District Administration has proposed closing Hills Elementary. While the decision to close a school is never easy, I do think it's the best course of action in this case. As you know, Hills Elementary is our smallest school, with only a hundred and twenty-six students. Of those hundred and twenty-six, only forty-eight live within a two-mile radius of the school. That means that the remaining seventy-eight are qualified for busing to go in there. To make this to be an operationally efficient school, you would have to bus in more students. That's a big issue. This has significant consequences for our district. I came into this community a little over a decade ago when Hoover was closed. I was involved with that debate and opposed it at the time, although I, um, that, that debate was lost, and we closed the old Hoover building. At the time, I looked at the data that we had for Hills, and it was operating at about twice the amount to run the average school district, uh, the average elementary school in our district, twice the amount. We are going to lose teachers in our district, and we already have absurdly high class sizes because of that. You're going to raise class sizes more. You've made decisions last year to have fewer full-time equivalent teachers, and you made those choices rather than making the hard decisions. This is a hard decision. You're going to have lots of people speak against it tonight. You need to make the right decision based on what the data tells you to make tonight. You'll hear talks about you'll have to bus the kids out of Hills because of this. That's an issue, but you're going to have to bus more to Hills to make that a viable school. That's a bigger issue. We are going to lose some of the great things that we have about our district, the RAM policy. We're going to lose the marginally good class sizes that we have, because we're going to put that on the sly to, to keep Hills open. That's the alternative we have here. There are two factors that you might be considering to weigh against this. One factor is making sure that our students and teachers and staff are all taken care of. You're doing that with our teachers and staff, they're going to be, they're not losing their jobs, and our students are going to go to great schools. The people talking about their students, they're going to go to great schools. There are transitions sometimes, that's hard, but it's something we do. And about the Hills community, that's something to consider. Does it outweigh the consequences for the rest of the district and Hills community when they have extremely large class sizes themselves because of these decisions that we're making? That's going to be really challenging for everybody in our district. We shouldn't do that. There are only forty-eight students within a two-mile radius. It isn't a big enough community to support an elementary school under the current budget circumstances. We could sacrifice to make it happen previously. We don't have those resources now. I grew up in a small town that was about twice the size of Hills. We had sixty students in every grade. They have forty-eight in the entire K through five, that in a two-mile radius. That is not sufficient to support a school that size. Make the hard call tonight. Don't delay, you're just gonna, the facts are still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tim Kemp, followed by Emily Hudecheck.
Hi, Tim Kemp, Hills, Iowa. Uh, I'm here today because you guys refused to come down and meet with us. You didn't want to meet with the students and families of Hills, you didn't want to meet with the community. I invited a few board members to come down and/or administrators, but you said no. You said, "Watch us on our YouTube channel, come up here and talk to us here." If you'd have come down there, you probably would have had three times the amount of people that you have here. I do appreciate you opening the public comments and allowing everyone to speak, though, tonight, so thank you for that. There are a lot of, uh, places in your budget that could be cut besides Hills. All you have to do is look at the budget. You've taken the numbers that the administrators have given you that tell their story, but I don't think you've closely looked at the budget. Many of you responded to my letter less than a week after this was proposed, that you were not in favor of keeping Hills open. That means you spent less than a week even discussing this or thinking about it, not very much time for a monumental discussion, or a monumental decision. You complain that Hills is too small to stay open, that you don't just move kids to fill buildings, yet that's exactly what you did to Hills, because that's why our population is so low. You moved them out to fill your schools in Iowa City. You moved Hills to the southeastern City High side because those were underpopulated. When Liberty was open, you moved us back because West High was underpopulated. So you do move kids to populate schools. That's exactly what you're voting to do tonight, close Hills to populate an Iowa City school. You say that it costs more to educate students at Hills. Some school will always be the highest. According to your numbers, next year, it would cost one thousand dollars more to educate Hills kids than it would at Twain or Mann. When you vote to close Twain next year, I hope you give them more than a thirty-day notice. You've, uh, pitted Hills against probationary teachers, saying it's either us or them. You blame vouchers for this, the loss of sixty students. If we still had those students, then where were you going to cut? And why aren't those cuts being looked at now? What changed? Your decision to close Hills is just one in a long list of ways that you have not equitably treated us or misled the community. Horace Mann was literally falling apart this year. You rushed to fix it, yet you haven't bothered to fix the damage from the tornado in Hills a year ago. The school is still missing things from that damage. You've done all you can to put up barriers for staff and students to overcome, even voting to build a new school, which you did really nothing to make happen. Other schools get voted improvements or to be built, and you rushed to do "under budget and on time" was your big claim, except for Hills. You say you talked to numerous landowners. Numerous means many. You know you didn't talk to numerous landowners. We know you didn't talk to numerous landowners. We're a small town, people talk. The swiftness of this decision is outstanding. Even the closure of Hoover was discussed with multiple meetings and community input. To propose then and to vote to close a school in less than a month? That would never happen if this was an Iowa City school. I ask you not to close Hills, but if you feel that you need to close it, then do the decent thing and return the school and the property to Hills. It was given to you so that the elementary school would be a part of the district. You came to us and asked us to join it. To close the school now and then just keep it and not return it would just be another of the mistreatment and disrespect that you've shown our school and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Emily, followed by Ron Stutzman. Emily, followed by Ron Stutzman.
Good evening, my name's Emily Hudecheck, two oh two Sierra Park Drive in Hills. I am standing here today as a Hills resident and current city council member, and once upon a time, I was even a Hills student. I am here tonight, like many of the people in this room, to ask you to vote no to closing Hills Elementary. The speed in which this closure is set to happen is concerning, especially since it was less than two years ago that the board voted to open a new school in Hills. As you come to a decision tonight, I wanted to share with you my perspective as a former Hills student, because I've been in the position that current, our current students are in. I have likely felt what they are feeling now: confusion, anger, pain. And unfortunately, I know that there are other former Hills students in the room tonight that have felt the same. During my time, boundary lines were shifting, and there was debate on where Hills students would go after elementary. The district's idea was to bounce us from one school to another to even out the numbers at the high school. I remember wondering and being confused as to why Hills was picked to do this, and being scared that I wouldn't have, uh, the same friends when I landed in whatever school they decided on. I didn't, by the way. Again, in middle school, I questioned if Hills students were valued differently to others in the district. I asked myself these questions from the back of a yellow taxi cab, that the district was sending down to transport two students to and from northwest. You see, it wasn't cost-efficient to send another school bus down to transport us to school, so they sent a cab. I remember, uh, my experiences sitting in the back of those cabs, never knowing who my driver was going to be, watching the empty beer bottles roll out from underneath seats, and having to ask my friends to borrow perfume so that I didn't smell like cigarette smoke walking into school. I wonder now if this is why the, the cabs were instructed to pull around the back of the building instead of drop us off in the bus lane. This should be a prime example to you why in the strive for cost efficiency, we are not always producing the best experiences for our students. If you consider the history of Hills and how it got into the position it is today, you'll see how many times in the past the community and students have been let down by false commitments and promises. And then you should be able to understand the conclusion that community members and the students of Hills are feeling about their value in the district. The town and the businesses in Hills have given unwavering some, support to this school and in turn ICCSD. When other schools were forced to cut their budgets this year, Hills School had the city's donation to fall back on to support students and staff. And yet, we weren't even given the opportunity to speak face-to-face with representatives from the district or board in a community meeting. Did we not even deserve that much? Perhaps, in part, the rush to make this decision has resulted in some reluctance to me. Hills Elementary is a unique and diverse school in this district, and it'd be a shame to close it. That school gave me the foundation of who I am today, and I am proud of it. Hills Elementary is a community within itself, but it also has an entire town willing to advocate for it. This room is full, this room full of people alone should give you pause to reconsider the shutting down of this school. And I urge anyone on this board who has any hesitation at all to vote no, because once this decision is made, it cannot be undone. It is time to show the community, but more importantly, these students, that they matter, that their voices have been heard, and they hold the same value in this district as all other students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ron Stutzman, followed by Judy Cambridge. Ron Stutzman, followed by Judy Cambridge.
I'm Ron Stutzman, box two fifty, Hills, Iowa, chairman of the board of Stutzman Incorporated. I, uh, don't know very much at all about opening and closing schools, but one thing I do know a little bit about, I believe, our company has been in business since our ninetieth year, and one of the things four generations ought to learn is how to treat people, transparency, and how to treat people during tough times. I believe Hills people are in a tough time right now, and I don't believe the school board making a decision in thirty days is a very fair way to treat the people of Town of Hills. The Hills, Town of Hills has had a school for over a hundred years, and a lot of families have lived in the Hills community for a hundred years. It's traumatic times. Mr. Degenner, you said when, uh, you were in, uh, Traya, that you understood it was the same problem, the same problem that, that Hills is having. Mr. Clausen, you made the comment last month, same thing. Well, when you've been in business for ninety years in the same town, you can't move like you guys did. We're rural. There's a lot of families have been in our town for a lot longer than ninety years. So I really, really wish you would reconsider. Consider things like, I believe this year that the Town of Hills will pay one percent of the school tax for those small number of kids, school tax in the county, where you got fourteen thousand, four hundred and some students. We're a pretty good deal, pretty good deal. It's hard for me to understand that thousand dollars is too much per student when the community really steps up paying the school, towards the school taxes. Please give it a, a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Judy Cambridge, followed by Angie Slaughter.
Good evening, I'm Judy Cambridge, I live at seventy Williams Circle in Hills. I'm here today to ask the board to vote no to closing Hills Elementary. Over and over, we have heard from some of you that you are not privy, privy to the previous board deliberations regarding past Hills decisions. I would like to express my concern that as elected officials, you have not taken advantage of opportunities to have conversations with Hills community members who could help you understand what has taken place. Brushing off questions with statements such as "I am not privy to previous board deliberations" is irresponsible. How can you make drastic changes to the current school district structure without considering what has taken place before you reconsider closing Hills Elementary? The governance of how a board and a superintendent interact is that the superintendent follows instructions from the board. Yet with the Iowa City Community School District, it appears to be the opposite. I believe this board has voted behind closed doors or is taking instructions from the superintendent to close Hills Elementary. If this were not the case, how is it the agenda for tonight includes voting on whether to close Hills Elementary, yet the staff and the residents of Hills have already been informed prior to tonight? An example, the Shared Visions Program is to provide preschool to all elementary schools. One board member wrote that during the March fifth finance meeting, Superintendent Degenner stated, "The preschool program from Hills will move over and continue at Alexander Elementary in the fall." Why would that decision have been made and concerned parents been told of this if that had not been a vote, if there had not been a vote prior to tonight? Also, how involved were you with the discussion about land purchase for the new Hill, the new Hills Elementary School? I've learned that the landowner with property adjacent to our community was contacted one time. During that discussion, he stated the price offer was too low, and that he would like to see a copy of the plan and what the proposal for water retention would be. One and done conversation, no further contact with the landowner. It is clear you could have purchased more land at a lesser price than what you paid for the Carson farm. How involved were you with that decision? Hills Elementary has been neglected for years, which has impacted the growth of our community. Once we were promised a new school, growth began, and it, and has, and as it was said when planning to build Borlaug, if you build it, they will come. We currently have seven new homes under construction. As a board, you have not followed the previous board's intentions. As an elected official, I ask you to take the time to do your due diligence, rather than taking the first option presented to you by Superintendent Degenner, review other opportunities to reduce the budget and do not close Hills Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Angie Slaughter, followed by Mike O'Leary.
Hello, I'm a resident of Hills. My grandpa was the custodian at Hills for almost twenty years in the seventies and eighties. I went to Hills, my older daughter went to Hills, and my son is a sixth grader at Hills. So what you're voting on tonight is very important to me. I want to frame my comments around the director, the Iowa City Community School Board Director norms from your website. One of those norms is "we will foster open, honest, and transparent communication." If that is your norm, I'm curious as to why you would not meet with the community of Hills to speak about this before deciding to vote, vote on it within thirty days of bringing up the subject. Specifically, I'm a little confused about the lack of transparency. When you're not open and having conversations with us, we hear things that we don't know if are true or not. One of those things is related to fringe benefits and an apparent clerical error that happened. And when you look at the budget on the Iowa City School District website, you see the early retirement budget went from one point six million in FY twenty-three to nine point three million in FY twenty-four. That's an increase of seven point seven million in one year. What's the story behind that? I also have heard that the Hills Elementary closing is more of a political point to make people in Des Moines, to make, to people in Des Moines as a counterargument to the new voucher law. Personally, I'm a very strong believer in the idea that public dollars belong in public schools, but I think it is deceptive to close Hills to prove a political point. I don't think this is open, honest, or transparent communication. Another, uh, norm from your website is "we will listen with the goal of understanding." Another norm from your website is "we will listen with the goal of understanding." Also, it seems like that's not actually being followed through on because you did not come to the community to get our input on this. So I guess, I think that maybe there's a lack of communication and maybe common sense. I don't understand the increase in spending on early retirement, the projected 20 to 30 more million more dollars on administrative building when you have this perfectly good building right here that you're using. And you're also spending money to add on to all the junior highs so the sixth graders can go to junior high. And then immediately after that, you're saying that there's too many seats in the elementary school, so you have to close one. I don't know how you're connecting these dots and would like more communication on this. You promised the students and families of the Hills area a new school. The Hills School is a special place where small town, rural, immigrant, and other minority students come together beautifully. The Iowa City School District has been unreliable for decades when it comes to this community, with reoccurring threats of closure and shifts back and forth between different junior highs and senior highs. I feel confident if the school district kept its promise and built a new, new school in Hills, there would be many more families move to town and families that have previously lost all trust would come back and send their, their kids there again.
Thank you. And my apologies, our timer is not working. We have to keep time up here. Next up, we have Mike O'Leary, followed by Jim Walters.
Hi, I'm Mike O'Leary. I live between Riverside and Hills, retired educator. Basically, my whole life has been the Iowa City Community School District. I grew up in, in Iowa City. I went to Hoover Southeast City High, class 69. Student taught at Robert Lucas, went on to be a classroom teacher for 12 years in Northeast Iowa Waterloo area. Later, elementary principal Dunkerton with Dan Smith, and then Burlington, and then I finally got an opportunity to come to Iowa City in 87, and I was an elementary principal for Corville Central for just 21 years. And during that time, I really enjoyed the job. I retired in '08. In, in 2010, I was working in the community and I heard that they needed an elementary principal at Hills. And they only had two weeks before school started and so I went ahead and took the job out of retirement. And it's half time, half pay, no benefits. It's okay. But there was one problem. They never told me which half of the day to work. So I worked the whole day because I loved the place. It was, it's an amazing school. I've been in a lot of other schools. I've got 37 years in education, and Hills is just a very unique community. It's very, very strong, and it's, it's been there for a long time. As board members, I know you have a very difficult job. You're not paid. You're serving the community yourself. But I ask you to slow down and think about whether this has to be done right now or not. As a principal, working in the district and working in other districts, we had many budget cuts. And some fell on my shoulders, and so we just had to make lists and more lists and more lists until we got to where we could make everything fly. So I urge you to, to really slow down and really think about this. This is a community that's been there for a very long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jim Walters, followed by Chris Leibig.
I'm, I'm Jim Walters. I live at 1033 East Washington Street in Iowa City, and I'm here also to talk about the Hills issue. I've communicated with the board collectively and with quite a few of you as individuals about my feelings on this issue, so I don't want to rehash those points. I do want to make a couple of quick comments about process, which a number of people have already made, particularly Mike just ahead of me. I, I think, it's always difficult to get for a board or for an institution to get public opinion on a matter that they need public opinion on. And in the last few years, especially after COVID, I think there's been kind of an accelerated divorce between elected officials, voluntary officials, well, you're elected to, boards and committees and the public. I mean, during COVID, we couldn't come talk to you. We'd had to, I don't Zoom, so I never got into the Zoom thing. I'm too old for that. But, but I think we, we've, we're not hearing each other anymore. We're not, we're not hearing each other anymore. And I guess I would just reaffirm what so many people, especially Mike just ahead of me, said is this is an issue you need to think more about. There, there are so many parts to this, as you're hearing, that you, that you need to take your time and consider. We, we know what happens when you rush things. We, a good example is in Des Moines where Governor Reynolds just gave us an AEA plan that nobody knew about. Out of the blue, this AEA plan comes down. And we know what happened as, after that, which is the people of Iowa stood up and said, you know, "This isn't right. This is not what we need, and this is not what we want." Unfortunately, the legislature is, being the legislature, is going to go along with most of what she wants. You don't have to do that. You don't have to follow in the footsteps, those kinds of footsteps and just affirm what you're told to do. You can, you can ask for a delay and you can take your time and get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Chris Leibig, followed by Liz Kelly.
All right, thank you. It's Chris Leibig, 6 Glendale Terrace. I already emailed you my thoughts about the Hills closure, so I'm not going to repeat all those here, but I did just want to raise what I think is a larger pattern, and I experienced it when I was sitting up there where you are. Every time a new set of board members comes in, it seems to me the central administration seizes the opportunity to convince these board members that it is suddenly an urgent emergency to do something that they've wanted to do for years but weren't able to pass. When I first got up there, the thing they had in front of us right away was cutting the discretionary busing to the neighborhoods where we didn't have to provide busing, but we chose to provide it. And it was important that we did this right away, even though nobody brought it up during the election and asked us about it during the election. We had to do this urgently and rip the Band-Aid off, and I voted for it, and I regretted it ever since. Not because maybe I could have been convinced it was a good idea. It was probably the right thing to do. But we rushed it through before we let people hear, you know, hear the full arguments over what people had to say. And there was no reason why we couldn't stop and get that information and do the process right. Two years later, after they passed the bond, the voters passed the bond, right away, the first thing presented to the school board was, "Well, we're going to change the facilities master plan after all." We knew we were going to do this during the election, but we didn't want to tell anybody. You know, it's like the voters can't handle the truth, you know? We got to wait till after the election so the candidates don't have to take a position on it, even though we know it's coming. Two years after that, when some of you were elected, oh, right away, we got to move those sixth graders to the junior highs. It's an emergency. Nobody brought it up during the school board election. Nobody had to take a position on it during the school board election. We had to do it so fast, people barely knew it was happening, and you couldn't hear what the real arguments and counterarguments were. I almost, when, when those of you who just got elected, got elected, I almost sent you all an email saying congratulations. But let me tell you, be forewarned, they're going to spring something on you as soon as you get up there, and it's going to be an emergency. It's going to be something they wanted for years. So now it's Hills, you know, and again, kept under wraps until after the election, so no one had to take a position on it during the actual election. All going to happen in just five weeks, no real engagement with the community, "Oh, it's an emergency. We got to do it." And you wonder why people are cynical about the way the district operates, you know? Look, for example, at the information that you were given. Other people have referred to it. The document says it costs $1,000, maybe $2,000 per pupil more to educate these kids at Hills than it would be somewhere else, and there's 126 of those kids. Do the math. That comes out to about $200,000 cheaper if you send those kids to other schools. In the same document, it says you're going to spend one, you're going to save $1.66 million by moving those kids to other schools. If that's not a red flag that gets you to ask some hard questions to the people providing you with information, I don't know what it would be. So my only message is, just like the previous speaker, slow down. The world's not going to end if you don't close Hills tonight. You don't even know how much money is at stake. Maybe it is the right decision. Take some time to hear all the arguments and the counterarguments. Let the voters think about it and talk about it. Ask some hard questions to the people who are providing you with the information. You won't regret it. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Next up, we have Liz Kelly, followed by Emily Diner, I believe. Liz Kelly, followed by Emma Dinnery, or Denny, I'm sorry.
It's Denny.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Kelly. I'm a resident of Hills. As well, I have generation after generation that's lived in Hills. I have older kids that are adults that were, went to Hills Elementary. I went to Hills Elementary. And my youngest, who's many years younger, is a sixth grader who's open enrolled out of the district, and she attends Mid Prairie. I as well, with my husband, own a business in Iowa City that supports the, that does a lot to support the school district. I, I guess I'm frustrated because we're just, a lot of us are just recently finding out about it. I heard that this had started in February. I didn't find out until this month. And it's really disheartening. It's disheartening because it's always brought up about the numbers and how the numbers are low. Iowa City School District has strategically caused this. When I was in elementary, more than once, we, there was redistricting, where they took our students and sent them to other schools. And then they threatened to redistrict again or to send them to a different high school and middle school. And parents like me eventually couldn't handle the uncertainty for our children and for ourselves. And so we made the difficult choice to then send our child out of the district. If you do the right thing and keep your promise and actually build us a school that we deserve and promises aren't broken, I fully believe that those lost, you know, people that have taken their kids out of the district will return as well. If you look at the redistricting, you can't just keep taking our kids away and then say, "Well, you're not big enough." And then also with the new area of Hills, there's a lot of, there's a lot of new families that are coming in. And I don't think for one minute you guys really actually know how many little kids there are that aren't in school yet that will soon be. Our numbers are increasing. And so I want to point that out. Another thing I want to point out is Hills is completely different in so many ways. And when you look at Hills, I need you guys to understand, I don't know, I don't, I don't believe any of you actually live in the community of Hills. But I want you to understand that it's very different. And I say this, having, you know, as an adult, I moved into Iowa City. I brought myself back, bought a home in Hills where, you know, my, my parents and my grandparents live to raise my children to go to Hills Elementary. And it's a different community. I also want to mention something I don't think has really been mentioned a lot. There are families that don't have transportation that reside in the new part of the town, as well as people that work for the Hills Elementary themselves that don't have transportation. If you close Hills Elementary, what's going to happen when a child is sick and needs picked up and their parents don't have transportation? Unlike the rest of the Iowa City School District where we're unique, we don't have cabs, you know, that are just easily available. We don't have a bus system. It's a different situation for these families. And as well, employees that work at Hills Elementary that don't have transportation, they can't go, just go to another school. They don't have transportation. They would lose their job. There's so many other things I could say, but, you know, I just recently found out. So I would just ask that you guys take more time to really consider this and, you know, consider it from the aspect of what it would do to a community and what it's doing to residents as well as business owners, you know, that have invested quite a bit into the school district. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Emma Denny, followed by Megan Moorhead.
Hi, I'm Emma Denny. I'm here to speak about protections this board could make for trans kids in Iowa City. Before I move to my prepared remarks, I would urge you to vote no on the proposal to close Hills Elementary. I will speak tonight about the ways that this board's actions endanger students and threaten communities, especially those this board historically ignores and overlooks, and the closure of Hills will do just that. Further, the pattern of this board to fail in its communication with affected communities and meet them where they are, as is the case with the Hills community, is a familiar failing. School boards are responsible for much of the enforcement of the laws that target trans kids in Iowa, and this board's malice and lack of courage has failed those kids. I'm here today to demand this board take up a policy of non-enforcement of Iowa's anti-trans laws, especially those that force dead naming and misgender of trans students, those policies that bar students from using bathrooms that align with their gender, and laws that ban books about trans lives and trans experiences. As you are aware, Iowa City's enforcement of these laws has already led some families of trans kids to flee the state and force those kids who can't afford to leave to live in fear of living their lives openly as themselves. Members of this board, when asked to stand up for trans kids, have instead threatened to remove support from these kids, remove current engagement with UAY and other community services that support trans people, and have frankly been insulting. I've also heard from teachers in ICCSD that they fear for their own safety and security within the district if they live their lives openly as trans people, with some going so far as to say they are afraid to even tell a student that they're trans if the student asks. Many of these same teachers have told me that they're afraid to speak out to this board for fear of retribution and losing their jobs. As we've seen elsewhere in this community, Iowa City has an upsetting pattern of crushing dissent by trans people. If you're afraid of losing good teachers, as some have pointed out, you will, you might lose if you close Hills. Sorry, that's not what you said. You said you would lose teachers if you left Hills open, which is insane, but we're not going to get to that. You're already losing teachers by enforcing these policies. I personally know trans teachers that have left this district because they could not work here. A non-enforcement policy is not unprecedented. Arlington, Virginia, and other school boards stood up to Virginia's governor when he tried to impose similar policies that we have in Iowa. You can choose to fight for all of your students, not just those who are easy for you to deal with. You just need to find courage and basic decency to do so. You have the power to stand up to Des Moines and to fight back, and you have a moral imperative to do so. Anything less makes you complicit in the oppression and struggle that trans kids already face in Iowa. Also, like, just don't close Hills. That's really weird of you to want to do. See ya.
Next up, we have Megan Moorhead, followed by Erin Gifford.
My name's Megan Moorhead. I live, I live in Hills, and I'm here to talk about Hills Elementary. I'm a mom of three girls. My oldest is in preschool at Hills. She goes to the full-day preschool program. It's one of the two schools in the Iowa City Community School District that does the full-day preschool. As a mom, I also take my two younger kids all the way to Tiffin for daycare. So I go from Hills in the morning to Tiffin to take my kids there, then to back to Hills to drop my preschooler off. Then I go to work. Then I work until 2:30, and so that I can pick up my daughter at 2:50. And then I go get my other children from Tiffin. I had all the opportunity to put my kid in Tiffin School. She could have went to school, the friends that she's had this entire time, because she's gone to Tiffin to take care with all of those kids. I chose to put her in Hills because my other two kids, who are two and 10 months, would be going to Hill School as well eventually down the road. I asked my work to change my work schedule for me. I am an office manager at a car dealership. I do the financial statement. I understand financial mistakes. I get it. I totally see all the numbers. I know receipts. I have I totally see all the numbers, I know receipts, I have to reconcile credit cards all, all month. I do all of that. You guys are managing people's money, you guys are managing children, futures of kids, kids, my kid, for example. I mean, I changed a whole bunch of stuff because I thought that was the right decision to do for my kid, for the longevity of her friends, of school. You guys are a great school district. You're like number one, or four, or whatever, but I, I mean, you're, you're in the, I, I went to a school that had 600 kids in my graduating class. That was a lot. I mean, my school, my, my classes were 30, 30 classes, or 30 students in each class. I didn't get the special reading help that I'd needed as a younger child. You know, she has, she's, she just turned five, and she can count to 20 in Spanish. I mean, that's like huge. She is excelling in as a kindergarten, like, as she, I just had her conference, she has kindergarten status in like five or six different things. I mean, I, they're obviously doing something right. You know, I mean, I, I live two blocks away, and on my street alone, the kids under the age of four, I mean, there's at least 10 of them, not including mine. On one, one road, one road, one road. That doesn't include the other that are going towards the splash pad that's there. I mean, I walk every single night, I can't even tell you how many kids I see outside playing, how many kids are at the bus stop to go to middle school and high school and whatnot. I mean, I'm 33 years old, I have three kids. Like I said, the oldest one is five. My kids, we're gonna go to that school. Think about what you're doing. I mean, I moved to Hills seven years ago. Don't get me wrong, I didn't have kids at that point, but I did plan for my kids to go to that school. My kids play on that playground every weekend. You know, what happens to that if you close the school? Do I not get to use that playground? You know? I mean, if this was your kids, your grandkids, how would you all feel? That school, that, that, that community is growing. There's, like they said, seven houses. I just, we just walked, because the last couple of weeks have been nice, we've just been walking the neighborhood. There are houses being built, people are moving there. Build your school, build our school like you said you would, and then there'd be more.
Thank you. Next up, we have Erin Gifford, followed by Nancy Carlson. Erin Giff, Gilford, followed by Nancy Carson.
It's Gifford, Erin Gifford. P O Box 137 in Hills. I'm here as a mother asking for the board to vote no to closing Hills Elementary School. My son has spent the last four years at this elementary school, creating friendships and joining clubs along the way. The teachers, staff, and students have made Hills a safe environment for him and a home away from home. Last month, my son was one of three students that was able to speak at the school district meeting. If we had more notice and stronger communication than the 24 hours provided, I believe more than three students would have taken the opportunity to speak out. Those students are being taught courage, strength, and standing up for what they believe in. I wish as a parent and member of the Hills community, I was told about this in a timely manner. You would be surprised by who would be willing to donate, volunteer, or be open to grade sharing. So ask us. I really hope that Hills Elementary gets a fair shake and a favorable outcome from tonight's vote. Kids, keep doing your best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nancy Carlson, followed by Sarah Clark. Nancy Carlson, followed by Sarah Clark. Nancy Carlson? Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm Sarah Clark, so...
I'm sorry, so Nancy Carlson left?
I'm Sarah Lee, yeah.
Okay. Sarah Clark, followed by John Marshall.
Hi, good evening, board. I'm Sarah Clark, and I'm gonna speak about the Hills closure. I have lived at 509 Brown Street, just three blocks from Horace Mann Elementary, for the past 15 years. One of the attractions when purchasing our home was the nearness to Horace Mann, even though my partner and I do not have kids and would never be sending any family members to the school. We just intuitively knew that having a nearby school helped make our northside neighborhood a true neighborhood. Within the first year of moving here, we learned that discussions about closing Horace Mann had been taking place off and on for at least the previous dozen or so years, and much to our dismay, those discussions resurfaced not long after we arrived in town. What were the charges against Horace Mann? Our school was old. It was built in 1917. It was deemed, quote, "operationally inefficient" by the facilities consultant hired by the school district. It was not ADA compliant, had no air conditioning, so when temperatures did rise above a certain point, our school was one of the schools that made the school district close for the day because we had no air conditioning. Nor was that school large enough to hold three or 400 students, and there was little room to dramatically, dramatically expand its footprint. Our neighborhood, with the assistance of others in Iowa City, pushed back against this description of Horace Mann, and after much persistence and advocacy, the renovation of Mann was included in the district's Facility Master Plan 1.0, though the school wouldn't be scheduled for renovation unless the general obligation bond vote in fall 2017 was successful. Happily, that bond did pass, and in fall 2019, a beautifully renovated Horace Mann reopened to benefit the neighborhood, the greater Iowa City community. And I'm sorry I'm getting emotional, but that is always how I felt about that school, even though I don't have kids there, I've never had kids there, but I just feel the strength toward that school. During the year or so of watching steering committee and community input meetings related to the development of FMV 1.0, 1.0, the school to which I felt most kinship outside of Horace Mann was Hills Elementary. So in the same characteristics present in the pre-renovated Horace Mann were in place at Hills, such as smaller student population, older building, not fully air-conditioned. I also admit there was probably a little bit of kinship because I attended myself a thousand years ago, when I was in school, a, what was then a very small Milwaukee Community School District, population of 1,100 people in that town. So it was with great dismay that I learned from a February 28 article in the Gazette that Hills would be considered for closure at the end of this school year. In reading the staff reports in your February 27 and March 26 meeting packets, several word choices jump out at me. One, quote, "The current situation dictates that the district return, retire the existing Hills Elementary School." Another time, the word "requires" was used to indicate that there was no choice. This brings to mind Margaret Thatcher's axiom, "There is no alternative." Not sure we really want that. I also saw references to "operational inefficiency," harkening back to what consultants used to write about Horace Mann 10 years ago. This is all impersonal abstract language where the outcome has been determined without human agency. You do have a choice, a choice, albeit a very difficult one. The reports also talk about excess capacity in elementary schools. Was this not anticipated when the decision to move sixth graders into middle school configuration was made, as other speakers tonight have alluded to?
Thank you.
Okay?
Next up, we have John Marshall, followed by Nick Slater Scott.
My name is John Marshall, and, I'm sorry, I don't have much voice tonight. I live in Iowa City. On February the 14th, Valentine's Day, over 40 years ago, this school board hired me to be principal of Hills Elementary, and I was there for 23 years. When I went, my colleagues told me, "Oh, you, you really don't want that school. It's not the lowest test scores." It's, the parents at that school are so angry, they meet at the firehouse and talk about all the bad things that are going on in that school, and then they go to the school board and complain. You're, you're getting a really bad deal. I said, "Well, it's the opportunity I have, I'm gonna try it." I met with the staff, and I said, "I don't have any preconceived notion of you, you don't know me. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be in my office for two weeks, I'm gonna watch you teach. I'll be in your classrooms for two weeks. Don't worry about it, don't change anything, just let me see it." At the end of the two weeks, I sat down with them, and I said, "I've never seen a more dedicated and skilled group of teachers in my life. Why is the community not know that?" So we started a program for letting people, we started the very first grandparents' day, a lot of... The grandparents were invited to come in and attend classes in the morning. And then at noon, we had a picnic for everybody in the community, and then the kids went across the stage and did something in the afternoon. By the time those grandparents came out of those classrooms, they were saying, "Man, that teacher's really good. I wish I had a teacher like that when I was growing up, that would've been fantastic. All of a sudden, I'm a hero." I didn't do anything. I just let the people know what that school was. And we changed the picture, and all of a sudden, Hills, the community of Hills, loved their school. And they still do. They have, ever since then. And I, I have to, I have to say to you, I don't know anything about the financial picture that you guys are looking at. I don't have any way of telling you whether it's right or wrong in terms of financial, but I can tell you, it's wrong to close that school. And it was wrong, it was wrong when we'd get up over 200 kids, and so we'd build a new school. Weber was one of those schools, took a bunch of our students, and we were down below 200. And then they took a trailer court of ours and gave it to Twain for, I have no idea why, but we gained, we gained small again. The people in that community built that school, so that when the elementary school district that they had was going to have to join a K-12 school district, that was the state law, they built that so they could always have a school in Hills. And when the Iowa City district came in, they added on to it to make it bigger, to handle more kids. I would guess, I don't know the numbers at all, I haven't seen it, but if you look at the attendance area, that was the attendance area when I was the principal there, and when I first went there, I bet you'd have five, 600 students going to Hills right now, and you'd be fine figuring out, "How do we build another school?" It's kind of the inner-city school out in the country, and that's the way it always was. And I'm, I'm so pleased to be able to see a number of, of my students that got up and spoke, and some parents that were on my PTO, and we were so excited to get, become a national Blue Ribbon School, twice, not during my time, once for mine. And when the Blue Ribbon School came and did a, a review of us, she said to me afterwards, "I'm raising your numbers because you didn't set yourself high enough." And we were in the top six in the country.
Thank you. Next, we have Nick Slater Scott. Nick Slater Scott.
Yeah, hello, my name's Nick. I live at 315 Ellis Avenue in Iowa City. I'm speaking in support of Emma Denny's demands for non-enforcement policies of the anti-trans laws in Iowa. I also want to ask that you not close Hills Elementary School. What I have heard tonight in regards to the handling of this situation is abhorrent and disgusting, and I'm appalled. Trans kids are under attack in Iowa and across the United States, and our schools are aiding in that. I have spent time working with trans kids. They are verbally and physically harassed in your schools. I emailed all of you after the murder of Nick Benedict in Oklahoma, and I was met with claims that you will uphold your anti-bullying and harassment policies. Will you uphold those policies when the state bullies our kids? I was told that you are making sure there are single-user restrooms available for trans kids in your schools, because apparently isolating kids is a really great idea? I don't know how to get you to understand that isolating and separating trans kids is not the answer. Their existence is already isolating, and part of that is your fault. Your inaction over the last year as a parent, and I'm disappointed in all of you who claim you care about trans kids. Trans kids are revolutionary, and it's time you protect them. Not doing so will leave them for dead.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. Next up, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Board Secretary Koven, ready to vote.
Can't let me vote.
Thank you, Director Finch. All votes have been cast, and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. And before we get to tonight's consent agenda, were there any additional questions from board members who reviewed the bills this cycle? Are there any items that directors would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull from Appendix 9, the transition housing.
Okay, that was just Appendix 9? I'm sorry.
Is it also in the consent, it's, it was in Appendix 9?
Yes.
Right? Correct?
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't know if you said...
We had, we had a request from a parent.
Yes. Any other additional items that directors would like to pull besides item 21, Appendix 9? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda minus Appendix 9.
Second.
Board Secretary Koven, ready to vote.
Online voting is open. All votes have been cast, and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. That takes us to Appendix 9. Director Finch?
Thanks, President Malone. I pulled this at, at the request of a parent to discuss the proposal for transitional housing, just for more information for our, our parents that are incoming sixth, sixth graders for the middle school.
Thanks, Director Finch. So as we approach the completion of our middle school construction, we're closely eyeing the timeline for the fall. We, we do still have expectations that construction's complete in August, but since the window is so narrow to the start of the school year, we're also trying to develop some contingency plans should that construction drag on a couple extra weeks or a month into the school year, so that we can still serve kids on the campuses to get the school year started. So at our next Financial Oversight Committee meeting, that second Tuesday in April, we wanted to talk to you guys more extensively about some of the points where we would need to make some more formalized decisions beyond this one about any further investment of dollars into those projects before we go ahead and commit those funds. Our facilities team's working directly with the construction contractors to monitor that. Obviously, we've been blessed with some good weather here since we got out of the month of January that's helped some of those project timelines get back in place. But the modular pieces that you see in front of you is really, those, represents those contingency plans, and, and we can plan to follow up again that first Financial Oversight Committee meeting in April.
Are there additional questions from directors?
Sure. Is this just approval for the, for the development of the plans for that?
Yeah, so the consent item is the approval of schematic design and development of the construction documents, and then you're also setting a date for a public hearing on the professional service agreement. And so, at this point, the, the most considerable expenditure of the funds would not be something we're recommending to you yet, and that's what we would have the conversation with you about in April.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move that we approve Appendix 9.
Second.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none, Board Secretary Koven, ready to vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. That takes us to tonight's public hearing, the 2024 Lucas Elementary Gym Edition Project. Vice President Clausen.
Now is the time and place for the public hearing on the proposed plans and specifications for the 2024 Lucas Elementary Gym Edition Project. The board of directors set the date for the public hearing on February 27, 2024. Notice of public hearing was published in the Iowa City Press Citizen on February 28, 2024. The district will receive bids on this project at 2:00 PM, April 8, 2024, at the Facilities Management Conference Center, 1137 South Riverside Drive, Iowa City, Iowa. Notice to con- Notice to contractors was published as required by law in multiple statewide plan rooms and on the Iowa City Community School District website on February 28th, 2024. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public?
Hearing none, I will close that public hearing. Next up, we have policy review of the 600 policies, policy primers, and 700 series. For that, I will turn it over to Director Finch, who chairs that committee.
Thank you, Director Moan. We reviewed the 600 series at our last P&amp;G meeting last month and again at the board meeting that same night. There not, there weren't a lot of changes there. There was an additional seventh member to the reconsideration committee for instructional materials and some changes to the PE waiver. On the policy primers, just some changes to the way the annual board award is determined through IASB. Tonight, we discussed the 700 series, some of the highlights there. We're putting into policy our current practice of the fiscal management policy. In terms of some, including delineating SBRC requests for modified supplemental aid. We're putting into policy some changes to our honorary and memorial gift program and activities that are allowed and prohibited. There are changes to our purchasing and bidding that align with state and federal laws and guidelines. And there is a particular prohibition of certain telecommunications and video surveillance services. And then lastly, some changes to our smart snack vending machines before school and 30 minutes after.
Thank you, Director Finch. Were there any additional comments from board members? Director Easton?
Director Finch, thanks very much. And as I understand it, a couple of those changes are requirements from the federal government. Is that right?
The prohibition of the certain telecommunications and video surveillance?
Yes.
Yes. And the the, yes, the food, the food and vending. Correct?
Okay, thanks very much.
Just a point of clarification, this is us not purchasing items from certain Chinese companies. And, you know, no donuts in the vending machines, basically. So that's, that's a Michelle Obama thing, but we're just
Thank you, Director Clausen. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to tonight's section of the agenda, the action items. First up is our operations lifecycle budget. Superintendent Degner or Chief Financial Officer Kerth, any comments you would like to make before?
Yeah, I would just share quickly, this is an item that we bring to you each year around this time. And what this is, is we utilize the bulk of our PEPAL funding, which is physical plant and equipment levy. And then a small portion of our SAVE funding, which is formerly the statewide sales tax for capital projects. We use those funding sources to fund our lifecycle budgets primarily for facilities-related lifecycle work. So if you look at the attachment there, things like flooring, roofing, building envelope, painting, that sort of thing. And then we also use this funding source to fund technology costs, which come out of the SAVE side. And then also certain other specific items. So for example, we have an equipment replacement lifecycle for musical instruments that's included within that PEPAL budget. So looking at the FY '25 proposed budget, it does come to the total for PEPAL is about 13.2 million. That represents about a 4% increase over last year, which aligns with our expected increase in PEPAL revenues. And that was developed with discussions and collaboration with physical plant, with our, our music staff, and also with our technology staff and transportation staff. And then the SAVE side is a proposed budget of $2.5 million. That's only a $25,000 increase. And again, was developed in collaboration with our technology staff there. One thing I will just note is that both PEPAL and SAVE are capital funds that by state code are restricted to paying for facilities, for equipment, and for certain transportation technology-related costs. So these are pretty restricted funding sources. This really aligns with how we've used these in the past.
Thank you. Are there questions for Chief Financial Officer Kerth?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up the, the musical instruments. It sounds like you had, you met with the music instructors. Because I did notice that you increased the budget by 50% from over last year.
Yep, that's actually an increase of 50%. And honestly, so I had a discussion with our, our music coordinator. And in past years, the district has actually spent more on musical instruments than the 50,000 that we've annually budgeted. And that was coming out of that PEPAL contingency line item that's also there. So this really reflects both an increase in funding for musical instruments, but also just a better reflection of the reality that we've seen. So we have a few line items here that were really adjusted in part because we have increasing needs. So flooring, for example, is one that we got feedback that will have increasing needs for investment in flooring lifecycle this coming year. And then others are adjusted to reflect what we've actually been spending on an annual basis.
And then I did have a question about the 1 million that was budgeted for land acquisition.
Yep, so that's a line item that we've had in there each year. And we budget for land acquisition as part of FMP 2.0. I, I don't know that we will actually utilize that for land acquisition because this is not a, a funding source that's tied to the fiscal year. If we don't use it for land acquisition, it would either carry over and create additional funds that are available for the following year, or it can be reallocated. One of the things that we see within these areas is when we do have a facility need that comes up, you know, it needs to come from somewhere. So funding for, for example, that land purchase line item, which for this current fiscal year, we don't expect to utilize that all for land purchases. So that'll help coverage, cover overage amounts that we experience in other areas.
So we don't, we don't intend to use that for land acquisition?
I, I think the conversation we need to come back to with the board is FMP 2.0 and what it looks like, right? We're obviously talking, taking a very heavy topic here this evening. There's other things that are in the FMP that may no longer make sense for the district to move forward with based on current data. So this somewhat of a placeholder in this PEPAL lifecycle budget may not be what that million dollars is used for in the FMP. And so I think that's what we need to have a conversation about from a holistic perspective, about where do those funds shift to and what are some of the priorities from the board? What did we hear from, you know, the community during some of the development of some of those processes? And what would we like to see those funds expended on? Because as our, our needs and data have changed, obviously some of those priorities have shifted as well. So I think that's a more holistic conversation to come back to, Director Finch.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then just one last question. Would it be possible to, to get a report on the actual expenditures for last fiscal year?
Yes, absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
I just want to comment, Adam, that the musical instrument line item is, is important to me. And I think it's important to many, many students in the district too. So I'm really happy to see it in there.
And I just kind of wanted to follow up on the musical instruments. I'm sorry that we're, we're all on that. But how do you ensure that the, the musical instrument budget is, I, I, for lack of a better term, equitably distributed between the middle schools and high schools? Because I know at least from my understanding, when Liberty was, Liberty High School was built, they got all brand-new equipment. And City and West both did not. Is that true? Or how does that factor into the distribution?
I would have to defer to others simply because I wasn't, I wasn't in this role and I'm not sure how that was distributed at the time.
Yeah, I would say that didn't go without controversy about how to open that third high school and what, what we were going to do for equipment. But that could go from musical instruments to the athletic equipment that was provided. That most of everything that was provided at Liberty was new and Weston City continued to use what they had. I know Weston City have done some things, obviously, to more aggressively replace some things since that time. But I think as far as trying to equitably ensure what we do with these recurring funds, I feel like we have a good approach that, that handles that. Obviously, Liberty's starting point creates a different replacement cycle for them than it might have been front-loaded towards City and West to get some of those items replaced.
Thank you. My only question is regarding the school bus equipment. Is that for repairs or new school buses?
Yeah, so that's another line item that we've just traditionally kept in the budget each year. I know that it's used for a variety of purposes. And my understanding is that repairs are one of, or sorry, not repairs, but modification costs, that sort of thing or something. But I don't know, Chase, if you have anything additional to add on that?
No, I think that's right. That also is one of those pieces we continue to monitor because of our contract with an outside entity. And so as you look at opportunities, one of the things the board has talked about is what's our capacity and capabilities to look at electric vehicles. And so keeping that line item in here allows us this flexibility even outside our transportation contract to explore those types of possibilities when it comes to renewable resources as it comes to transportation.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Real quick, there's nothing in here for lockers. Working in a high school, I don't think they just put in brand-new lockers. Maybe two students in the entire school use those lockers. So are we seeing the same thing that kids just aren't using lockers and maybe this isn't a priority?
You know, I'd like to get some input from our administrators, but I could probably, I mean, you're probably not too far off from what we experience in our system too, just given the transition time between classes, the lack thereof, or many materials that students just take with them in their backpacks. So without speaking for each of the buildings, I'd like to get some input. But you're probably not too far off with what we experience in our schools.
I mean, honestly, it's the Chromebooks, right? They just don't have 50 pounds of books to look around. And so that, that's my sense.
And that, that line item is for athletic lockers, is to replace existing?
Thank you. I would open it up to entertain a motion for the operations lifecycle budget.
I move that we pass the FY '25 operations lifecycle budget.
Second.
Any further questions or comments from directors? Hearing none. Board Secretary Coven ready to vote.
Online voting is open. All votes have been cast and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. Next up is the series, 600 series policy education programs. We just briefly heard about that policy review. I would open it up if there's any additional questions or comments from directors. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the 600 series policies.
Second.
Board Secretary Coven ready to vote.
Online voting is open. All votes have been cast and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. Next up again is the policy review for the policy primers, policy 216.2. Are there any additional questions or comments from directors? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve policy primer, policy 216.2.
Second.
Board Secretary Coven ready to vote.
Online voting is open. All votes have been cast and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Thank you. That takes us to Hills Elementary School closing. Superintendent Degner? Did you have comments before directors?
Yeah, maybe just a couple of things. First, I'd like to just acknowledge and thank everybody who came this evening. We certainly understand how difficult and challenging this particular recommendation is and all of your personal experiences, past and current, at Hills Elementary. And so thank you for coming and providing that input. I know that the administrative and team, administrative team and board was looking forward to hearing that and to hearing your, your thoughts and opinions on the subject tonight. I'd also want to say that I apologize if there's anything from our team that seemed less than transparent. I feel like we always try to overdo it on the sharing of information and, and have continued to do so from what I've seen in dialogue with community members, requests that this board has asked. And furthermore, to a former board member that spoke this evening, this board does their homework. They ask the hard questions. Nobody's tried to slip anything by them. These are people that volunteer their time and spend hours to do it. And so they've went above and beyond in their engagement in that regard, in following up and communications and asking our team for additional information. And so there was no trick trying to be played. Yes, we did provide a recommendation that is an extremely difficult one and comes with lots of emotions and is very challenging. The alternatives that the board has to consider are also very emotional and very challenging and mean the end of careers for some people. And so there's no easy decision that's in front of them this evening, but I did want to state that. The problem is for us, the data just doesn't show growth in Hills, at Hills Elementary. And so as we look at those numbers and how we have to consider first and foremost how we serve all 14,000-plus students in the district, we cannot afford to continue to support a disproportionate level of our resources on a campus that way. And that's not a reality any of us asked for. But that's the reality we've been given. And so our job is to now figure out what we do next and make sure we continue to provide an excellent experience for all kids in Iowa City Community School District. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions and anything you need through your deliberation.
Directors, are there questions or comments?
I have some comments and I can start us off. I'll apologize in advance to my directors, my co-directors, it's a little lengthy. But it's an important decision, so I wanted to put my thoughts out there. I will be voting to close Hills Elementary tonight. Over the past several months, we have received feedback and engagement from the community regarding the potential closure of Hills. I have read each and every email that has come across our email. I have read every single news story and I have followed your discussions on social media. I understand that this is a significant decision with serious ramifications to the Hills community. So I want to speak to my decision-making process. I do not believe that the closure of Hills will have an adverse impact on students. The educational experience these students will have at their new school will be the same high-caliber educational experience that they currently have at Hills. Now, true, some students will be bussed, which will be a change. But I will tell you that as the parent of two elementary-age kids who spend nearly an hour every single day riding the bus to and from school, I do not believe that busing adversely impacts students. Moreover, because of the economies and scales and how we allocate our resources, the Hills students may have access to even more resources and support at their new school, actually enhancing their educational experience. I then looked at what we would have to cut if we kept Hills open. Firing teachers and eliminating the RAM, these are programs that touch every single student in our district. These policies are directly responsible for improving student outcomes. We already hear that our class sizes are too large. Firing these teachers would increase our class sizes on an average of two children per classroom. Eliminating the RAM would add even additional students in our most vulnerable classrooms. There is no doubt in my mind that these policies would negatively impact our students. We have heard a lot of feedback telling us to find other money to cut. We have been slashing our budget for 18 months. Last year, we cut millions of dollars from our budget by eliminating 11 administrative positions, offering an early retirement plan to our teachers and staff, many of whom were not ready to stop teaching, but they left because it was in the best interest of this district. We, we delayed the purchase of much-needed curriculum, modified our TLC program, and many, many other cuts. This fall, we slashed another $3 million by further cutting the administrative staff by seven positions, reducing our teacher quality funds, and eliminating building substitute positions, among other things. The Hills closure is part of another package to cut $5.5 million and also includes requiring employees to contribute to their health insurance plans, adjustments to our RAM, and phasing out insurance for our building substitutes. And finally, this is not substitutes. And finally, this is not the end. We have another $2.5 million of cuts ahead of us next year that we have to make. This will be a total of $24.7 million over the course of three years. I hope that number really sinks in because there are no other cuts to be made unless we are willing to start touching student programming, things like music, foreign language, our librarians, and extracurricular activities. But I consider those programs to be essential to our student experiences, and I will continue to pursue cuts that save us operational dollars before cuts to student experiences. The final consideration that I gave much thought to was the impact on the Hills community. Nearly every email and letter we received in support of keeping Hills open spoke about how the school was the heart of the community. We heard concerns about what would happen to Hills without the school, concerns about property values lowering, and others are worried about losing a community gathering place. I do not discount these concerns. I believe the community of Hills will be worse off without this school. I hear you, and your concerns are valid, and I agree with them. But I cannot let those concerns influence my decision. I went and looked at the law, what the legislature has told me as a school board member I must do. Iowa Code, Chapter 279.1, Subsection 3, provides, "A school corporation is entrusted with public funds for the purpose of improving student outcomes, including but not limited to student academic achievement and skill proficiency, and the Board of Directors of the school corporation is responsible for overseeing such improvement." The law requires me to use our funds for the purpose of improving student outcomes. It prohibits me from using school funding to save a rural community or to keep property values high. Every dollar we spend must be for improving student outcomes. And given that I believe that the Hills students will experience the same or better outcomes with this closure, I have to follow the law, and I cannot vote to keep Hills open. I want to address one last issue before I let my fellow directors speak. We have received a lot of feedback that we are in this situation because ICCSD has mismanaged money. Now, I understand that this is a significant decision that comes at a great cost to the Hills community and that members of the community are looking for someone to blame, and ICCSD is an easy target. And if it is easier to tell yourselves that we have mismanaged money, then you go ahead and do that. But if you actually care about public education in this state, to all of you here tonight that have children in our public schools, or someday will have kids in our public schools, and you're concerned about the future and their future, I would implore you to wake up because the closure of Hills has absolutely nothing to do with the ICCSD mismanaging its money. It is the result of chronic and persistent underfunding by the state that has been going on for the past decade. Des Moines Public Schools must cut $14 million from their budget this year. Grinnell Newberg School District must cut $1 million from their budget this year. Lynnmar is firing 50 teachers and staff because of budget cuts that they are forced to take this year. West Des Moines Public Schools must cut $3 million from their budget this year. Wapalo School District must cut $275,000 from their budget this year. Fairfield Schools must cut $1 million from their budget this year. Did all of these districts mismanage their funds? According to the Legislative Services Agency, if the legislator passes its 2.5% SSA, which is less than what they proposed just a few weeks ago, 117 districts across the state are going to have to increase their property taxes in order to cover for the shortfall of their budgets due to underfunding by the state. And I'd also like to point out that just recently, our neighbor Highland announced that they are moving to a four-day-a-week school model next year. Think about that. Highland cannot afford for their students to attend school five days a week anymore. They can't do it anymore. And it's not just Highland. In the past three years, we have seen a 500% increase in the amount of school districts that have to transition to a four-day-a-week school. And those aren't big school districts. Those are your rural school districts in Iowa. What is happening here in Iowa City is happening all across the state, and it is a direct result of the governor and the legislature's decision to take your tax dollars and divert them away from public schools. Instead of your money supporting Hills, instead of your money supporting your local public school, your money is going down the road to Dowling Catholic in Des Moines. This is what we told the legislature would happen when they diverted $350 million of taxpayer money to private schools last year. We hear the legislature and governor talking about eliminating income tax, cutting property tax, reducing special levies, touting like it's something great, but when you make these types of tax cuts and then hoard a billion-dollar surplus, you have to make it up somewhere. And they are doing it on the backs of Iowa public schools. It is not going to stop until people like you, parents, grandparents, and community members, get involved and tell the legislature that enough is enough. Demand that our public schools are funded and supported so that we can have thriving communities. None of us on this table want to close this school. None of us.
I'm sorry.
None of us want to close this school.
Do not, do not interrupt.
Nobody wants to fire teachers, increase class sizes, reduce busing, or eliminate programming. But these are our only options if the legislature continues to divert our much-needed resources to private schools. This is not a partisan issue. This is an Iowan issue. We should be taking care of Iowa's kids and giving them a top-notch education. Tonight is a tough night, and it's a sad night, and I'm not going to discount the emotions that I'm sure are felt by the Hills community. But I sincerely hope that the people in this room understand it's only going to get worse if we do not hold Des Moines accountable. I hope that you all start advocating for public education the way that you have advocated to keep your school open because it is impressive. You are a force. You all have the power to effect positive change, and I hope that you are willing to do so.
Excuse me. Please, do not shout out. That is disruptive to our meeting. I'm asking politely. I do not want to take a recess to have folks removed. Please, show the same amount of decorum and respect that everyone got at the podium. Thank you.
She has no timer.
No, ma'am. Please.
Keep hills open.
This is our meeting. This is our meeting. If you insist, I will ask you to leave.
Oh, I'm leaving.
Okay, please leave.
I'm leaving.
Let's take a recess, please. Again, I ask you to show the same amount of respect and decorum that you were shown when you spoke to us. I don't want to continue to have recesses and ask people to leave. Thank you. With that, any additional comments from directors? Please feel free to jump in. Director Abrams?
Yeah, I have just a short statement I'd like to read. I have listened carefully to everyone who has spoken about Hills through public comment and individual conversations. I have read and reread every email, letter to the editor, other written communications regarding the closure of Hills. Many of these have come from people I know and respect. They have given me an understanding and certain empathy for the anger, sorrow, distrust, fear, and angst people feel about closing Hills Elementary. I also know the governor and our state legislators continue to hinder us financially by recently enacting vouchers and systematically underfunding our public schools year after year. If you really want to do something to help our schools, vote in November for those candidates that really want to support public schools. As a school board, one of our biggest responsibilities is to balance the budget and maintain quality educational programs for all of our students. Again, this year, due to flat and possibly declining enrollments in ICCSD and the lack of financial support from the state, balancing the budget means making cuts. Our North Star has been to not cut staff and not cut programs. The budget cuts we're voting on tonight, which include closing Hills, reducing classified teaching and administrative staff through attrition and retirements, modifying our teacher leadership programs, delaying curriculum purchases, and others, all meet that criteria. While voting to close Hills is a very difficult decision, I fully believe students from Hills will be embraced at Alexander or whatever elementary school they choose to attend. They will receive the quality education they deserve with all the needed support and services. That is what all 14,000-plus students in ICCSD deserve, and it is my duty to ensure that that happens.
Thank you.
Ruthina President Malone, I just would like to say that I fully concur with the comments made by Director Williams and Director Abrams. We are in the position that we are in tonight because the Iowa Legislature has consistently and effectively reduced funding for public schools in this state, including this district, to the extent that now, as Director Williams pointed out, this district, along with many other districts, are considering things like closing schools. That's a reality that this board cannot change with simple decisions about looking at the consent agenda and pulling small amounts from requested budgetary expenditures. After stating that, I am more than willing to continue to meet with you, other members of the community, and to talk about why we're here, what we are looking at, what suggestions, what recommendations you may have, so that we can make any changes to our program of budgetary realignment that makes sense to all of us. I just want to emphasize again that I agree with, I think, the rest of the board, that I'm not interested in making staff reductions, and I'm not interested in reducing programmatic offerings. offerings because of the situation we're in. If you have ideas outside of those limitations, I'm willing to talk with you about it, and I'll say to the board that I'm, well, when it's appropriate here during our discussion, I think I'll make a motion to defer action on this item to our second meeting in April. I know that's controversial, and we may have some discussion about it, and I'm not sure to tell you that there's board support for making that deferral. But again, we're not here because this is what we want to do. We're not here because we have anything against the community of Hills or the Hills Elementary School. We are here because of what the Legislature is doing to education in this state.
Go ahead, go. Over the past several weeks, I've mulled over the multiple issues surrounding the closing of Hills Elementary School and enrollment in the district and within the state. I take this decision very seriously. As advocates from Hills Elementary know, I favor closing Hill School. If there's one thing I hear most about parents and guardians throughout the district is the sizes of the classrooms in our buildings. I got an email about a half an hour to an hour before this meeting on class sizes. To keep class sizes where they are or lower them, we must increase efficiency at our elementary level. Iowa City Community Schools has 21 elementary buildings. Sioux City and Waki, the two districts with comparable kindergarten through fifth-grade enrollment, again, kindergarten through fifth-grade enrollment, and demographics that we split the middle of on race, ethnicity, and socio-economic status, have just a little over half the elementary buildings we do. As we become more efficient, we can offer better learning environments for all of our students within the district. A few of you know, but I'm a graduate from Linmar High School. I just watched the district reduction in force 19 teachers and 31 staff members. I know one of the teachers. That was RIFED. That is the term that people in education use when they get that letter in the mail. I was also a part of Omaha Public Schools during the Great Recession when we experienced RIFED. I had my principal come to me in my building and ask me to switch from social studies to mathematics, a subject that I was trained to teach, but I was completely ineffective of teaching. It was either that or a coworker getting fired the next day who was a young mother. I fell on that sword, and the teachers, or not the teachers, but the students that I taught, received a worse math teacher for it. I don't want our students experiencing a similar thing. And with this, I asked, I was the one that asked the administrators, how many teachers it would cost elsewhere to keep Hills open? I did not like removing the weighted resource allocation model, which provides better class sizes for our most marginalized students throughout all of Iowa City schools, and I did not want to end attendance support busing that provides 14, possibly 15 routes to get our students from marginalized communities to and from school. So I wanted to know how many teachers it would cost. And keep in mind, Hills Elementary has 37 full-time employees, not counting shared teaching positions, janitors, and technology staff. The cost is 23 teachers. 23 classrooms for six classrooms at Hills Elementary. The cost of 23 classrooms for six classrooms is far beyond anything I'm comfortable with. Additionally, as I said, I'm just not in support of ending RAM or attendance support busing. Now, to the question of growth. Efficiency is more accessible when we have increase in enrollment. Unfortunately, after reviewing the Demographers' report and my own look at the United States Census data of the American Community Survey, growth seems unlikely. The Census estimates that the state of Iowa will have, currently has, 27,500 fewer newborns to four-year-olds than it does 10 to 14-year-olds. Johnson County is estimated to have 700 fewer newborns to four-year-olds as it does 10 to 14-year-olds. That means our entire state, whether it's public or private education, no matter what way you dice up the dollars, schools in the state, public and private, charter, whatever it may be, are going to experience an enrollment loss of 27,500 students within the next five years from where our levels are as a state. Though we have three plots of land and continue to hold on to those properties, my fellow millennials and the Zoomers that are coming after me, not after me, but you know, aging after me, simply do not have children on a level like any generation before us. We cannot count on enrollment growth to create more lines of spending as we have as a district in the past. This is the reality of what Iowa and Johnson County are facing. And I want to finalize with, I am sorry for the impact that this will have on Hills as a municipality. But as we have said, some have said already, I cannot focus on the town's viability on our commitment to education of 14,400 students, including the students who currently attend Hills Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director Malone. So first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. I do have read every single email, social media post, letter to the editor, news article, and I listened intently to everything that you said tonight. What it tells me is that your children and their education are very important to you, and it should be, and you should be very proud of that. I also want to thank, the directors spoke before me so eloquently, saying everything that I would like to say. There's not much more for me to add to that. But I cannot overstate how much everything has changed with the introduction of vouchers, which, by the way, the Iowa Legislature passed in less than two weeks during their last legislative session. There is an enormous amount of uncertainty ahead surrounding enrollment, funding, and the future of public education in Iowa. The districts who are going to weather this changing landscape must be able to pivot in ways that allow them to respond to the conditions created by our state government. As someone who was raised in a small town, I have a deep appreciation for the perspective of the citizens of Hills, and this decision weighs very heavily on me. As a board member responsible for providing the best education possible to the more than 14,000 students in our district, my empathy requires me to consider multiple perspectives and the potential impact that other budget reduction measures would have on students across this entire district. The detrimental effects are more than I am willing to risk. I too have mulled over whether or not we take a little bit more time here, as Director Eastem has. I would be fine with taking more time. I do know that tonight's decision may appear rushed, but this district has been contemplating the viability of an elementary school in Hills for several years now, I believe. The administration has laid out a transition plan that keeps the students and families together, and after careful review, I am satisfied with this plan. If the remainder of the directors do not wish to wait to hold a vote, I am ready to vote tonight. What I know for sure is that the students of Hills Elementary will have access to the same high-quality educational opportunities that our district has to offer regardless of which elementary they attend. And as a member of this board, assuring this for our students is my primary responsibility.
Director Clausen?
Thanks, President Malone. I too have read all of the emails multiple times. Personally, I stay away from social media, just for my own mental well-being overall, but I paid it deep attention, and I really appreciate everybody who comes here to speak. That is not easy for anybody on any level, and this is a charged moment. I apologize for not coming down to Hills. You know, I will say, having heard all the voices, I believe we've heard the message. The message isn't different. Many people have said the exact same thing, and I understand it. I really understand it. I really empathize. I'm from, not to compete, but I'm from the smallest town. I grew up in a town of 120 people. It's about 109 now. We went, as Phil said, Hills is the big town. Our big town was 400 people. My dad was president of the school board when they decided to consolidate with Dennison, and there were people in that town who never spoke to my dad for the rest of his life for that decision. It was a tough decision. There was no other choice. I went to a high school that was, the writing was on the wall, because when these things normally happen in a small town, when you're headed towards consolidation, the data's there for probably a good 10 years, because people, like you all, cling to those schools. It is the identity. I know that, but I can tell you, for 10 years before that school consolidated, it just went downhill. My own brother, at 14, had to go in front of my dad as a school board president and petition him to let him open enrollment at Dennison so he could have an opportunity. He was 14, teaching choir, because they couldn't hire a competent choir director. So you guys said Hills is unique. It is unique. Iowa City is unique. We're unique. We're a company town based on the University of Iowa. That is why we exist. I know, Hills is not a farming community. It's a bedroom community, and most of the farming communities in Iowa are gone. When I go back to my town, my house, my grandma's house, they're junkyards, full of abandoned cars. It's depressing. The school is just gone. It just doesn't exist. It was demolished. The opportunities there are bleak. People don't move there. And here's one thing I know for sure. The kids in Hills, they're going to go to the, someone questioned if we're one or four, we're one. We're the best school district in the state. We have three of the top 15 schools in the state of Iowa, and we're competing with high-dollar private schools all over the state, and we've got, West is number one. If Hills follow that feeder pattern, you're going to the number one school in the state. You cannot understate those opportunities for kids. But I do get the elementary piece. It is going to affect the community, but the community's not going to go away. The primary reason for that is the University of Iowa. It's why we're all here. It's why we exist as a community. So when people talk about the Legislature, the real harm is if they do something so that the university can't really operate, because then we're all just out of luck. And there are people there who have said that. They have said things. They don't believe in public education. They don't believe in regents universities. They don't believe in tenures for professors. Maybe they're not in the majority, but those voices have power in the Legislature. So I don't, I hate getting political with this, but when you talk about tax dollars in the state, it gets political real quick, because there's a lot of legislators down there, many of them homeschool. They really don't care at all about public education. They don't send their kids there. They don't care, and they'll say it. They're not shy about it. We hold a legislative forum every single month. We invite all of the area legislators. We invite all of the superintendents. The people who represent of Hills have never shown up, and they will not look our legislators in the eye when they try to talk to them about these issues in Des Moines. So yes, it does matter. If they care, please have them contact us. Please, please, so we can tell them what happens in Des Moines affects us here. We just said our lifecycle budget is for going up by 4%. That's real. I don't know how many of you, have your utilities gone up over the past 10 or 20 years? Ours have. Have you gotten raises over the past 20 years? It happens here, and year after year. We're lucky if we get 2.5%. Of course, that doesn't cover inflation. If you operate a business, if you are forced, forced to only grow by 2.5% for the past 10 to 20 years, could you still be in business? Honestly, ask yourself that, because we don't get to decide our revenue. We don't get to pick how much money we get. We are told, we actually don't get to decide how much to raise our taxes. We are told, you may grow by this much. That's the law in Iowa. It is different than in other states. We are told how much money we get, and it doesn't matter. Now, the truth is, yes, budgets are about priorities, and it is about choices. We do have a choice not to close Hills, but that choice comes with other consequences. It is a real tight budget we run. 86% of every dollar we spend goes to a person, right? Then you have utilities. We can't control utility costs. That's a fixed cost. We, almost everybody who tells us to find money to cut says, "Cut admin," and we have, and we will continue to do so. But let me tell you, they do real jobs, and they're real jobs. The real time that they spend has an impact on kids. It really does. Believe me, when I was a teacher, and Director Abraham will know this, because she was my principal, when I was a teacher, I'm like, well, what do principals do all day? I'm in here with the kids, and the bells ring, because I didn't know, because I didn't see it. Well, now I know that principals are working just as hard and probably even harder than folks with hours and stuff that they put in. They really are. And before I got elected to the board, you believe me, I said the same thing. Well, what do those central administrators do all day? And now that I've seen it, because yes, Phil, we look at the budget. I go through it every time, and maybe you shamed me into doing it. I can't come in and look at the physical bills, because I do teach all day. I just, I'm not somebody who has a job I can leave. That's just not my situation. But we do go through this stuff with a fine-tooth comb. Look, I certainly apologize if this feels quick. It is quick, and I want to talk about that a little bit, because unlike any other business, we don't get to pause. We don't get to pause. If we're not ready in August, it doesn't matter. The kids will be there. We have to do it. We have to keep schools open. And why do we do this now? Because now, if you're a teacher, you have to know now what's going to happen for you in August, because now is when teachers look for jobs. That's the reality of the business we're in. It goes like that, and that is different than other businesses. We don't really, the kids are going to be there, and we have to be ready. It's a lot of work to get ready for 14,000 kids. So some of the timing piece is if we delay, the honest truth is, if we put this off a month, it'll be the same conversation in a month. You guys aren't, I don't think you're going to change your heart in a month. The numbers that we're looking at aren't going to change in a month. If we delay, really, in a school district, you have to delay a year. You do. You can't do this in the middle of the year. We just don't have that luxury, right? So for our staff, we try to do these things in a timely way for them, for principals, for staff to know as much as possible, hey, this is happening in March, so you can get ready for August. So if you want to go find another job, good. The other thing we do, and I want to make this clear, because I know, believe me, I've been in education, and I'm a special educator, and we throw these acronyms around like they're bad candy, and there's a ton of them, because we have so many, and they're long, but the RAM model, the weighted resource allocation model. No one else does this. I don't know of a single district in the country that does this. When I talk to my colleagues in the state, they think we're crazy. No way could we afford that. We cannot, this is what they say, "We cannot afford to have smaller class sizes in our schools with the highest needs." Now, they will say it's not fair. Somebody earlier brought up the difference between equity and equality. That's the difference between equity and equality. Equity is getting resources where they're needed, and we do that, and it costs millions of dollars. It is not cheap, because we know. Look, big class sizes are a problem, but it's not the same everywhere. More of a problem are the makeup of your class. And if you have kids coming into your classroom who have barriers, who don't know English, who are coming from a low-income house, those barriers make a big difference in your classroom. My dad taught in China for eight years. He could have 70 kids in his classroom, there wasn't a peep. There wasn't a kid out of place. They just sat there and learned. 70 kids, and it wasn't an issue. That's not what we have. And if you've got kids who are coming in with trauma, mental health issues, learning the language, look, 16 is too much sometimes, but 32 is undoable. So we know that if we target those resources where they're needed, we, look, you can talk to a teacher who has 16 versus 32 kids with problems, they'll tell you it's better, but we've got the data to show it moves test scores. There's not much that moves test scores. We've moved them. We're moving in the right direction, and if your reading goes up in elementary school, that's a huge predictor for your lifelong success, and we are making dents because of that RAM. So we say, oh, we don't want to touch RAM. So we say, oh, we don't want to touch RAM, because we've seen it help the most vulnerable kids. All of the Hills kids will be included in that system. Right? People talk about, they weren't here tonight, but we had a lot more folks from, from some of the mobile home parks a couple of weeks ago. And I know they brought signatures, and there were 900 of them. And believe me, I, I, I give a lot of value to all of that as well. The main thing we heard, maintain our services. So that's one piece of information. Your information, most of the folks tonight about this is our community, I get it. I do. It will be different. I think largely, at the secondary level, it won't be any different for, for your students. Not at all. It will be exactly the same. They will still go to amazing middle schools and junior high. And by the way, for the director, former Director Leibig spoke, the middle school model is based on educational reasons. It's just better. When you can go back to those debates. This isn't a quick thing for them to slip in so we, I don't even know what the shady thing we're doing with middle schools is. We want a better educational experience for our kids. We know that right now, when they get to high school, they, they don't really have a lot of career exploration. So we're building that into the middle school model. It's for educational reasons. Okay? When I came to the university, I told you, I'm from a small town in Western Iowa. My dad said, oh, Iowa City, it's three square miles surrounded by reality. And, and I, he might have meant different things. But the truth is, we have been protected from reality. And the main reality we've been protected from is the loss of students. That is the story in the state of Iowa. We lose students. But Iowa City hasn't. All that entire time I've been on the board and before that, we would gain 150, 200, 325 students every year. And because of the funding formula in Iowa, when you gain students, you know you can bank on that for another year. We, we have to do these budgets one year at a time. We can't predict out because we don't know how much we'll get. But we knew we'd grow. And if you're growing, you're fine. The truth is, the growth in North Liberty and Quarville and Iowa City has subsidized Hills Elementary. That's just the truth. And you know what? Not only was I fine with that, I went back to my comments in June of '22. And believe me, I spoke strongly about that. I believe in that. I believe those other communities should subsidize Hills, because I do believe in the uniqueness of Hills. But it's gone. The growth is gone. It's not that Hills isn't growing. Hills hasn't grown for a long time. And I appreciate the anecdotal evidence of the kids running around. But Director Lingo pointed out, people are not having children. We lost 6,000 students in the state during COVID. We don't know where they went. We have no idea. We, we haven't recovered from that loss. So you add on to that the, the low birth rate. Look, we do have to plan for 100 years out. When we pass that bond, we built those small schools and built them up to last 100 years. So we do have to think 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road. It's our job to try to do that, to set us up for the 50-year plan. It, it, and, and when that growth stops, that's the thing in Iowa. The funding dries up right away. Right away. And the state will come in and take over your district. They absolutely will. They've done it. They did it in Davenport, and they will do one thing. They will close small schools, because it's, it's an easy way for them to capture the money. But mostly, they fire teachers. Again, in education, we call it RIF, reduction in force. It's getting fired. And that's just what they do, because it's the, it's where 86% of our dollars go. So of course, they're like, well, we're going to tackle that. Right? So we, these, there are, there's a whole lot of factors involved in this. It is not easy. Neither is saying we want to raise class sizes everywhere else in the district, especially at those schools that have the highest challenges. Because they're not just in Hills. My daughter goes to Kirkwood. That had a way higher free and reduced population than Hills for a long time, 80%. Right? So I know what it's like at those tougher, those schools that just have kids with more challenges. And you have more challenges, you have more challenges. We have to meet those, because we got to get kids ready to learn. And that's, that is what we do. I believe that schools support communities. I do. But it's not our job by the law. The law is real specific, and thank you, Director Williams, for sharing the law. It's about educational achievement. Kids have to learn to read. They got to learn to write. They got to learn math. And nowadays, we have to look at careers and some of these other things that, that are critically important. Preparing our kids for a world that we don't even know what the jobs are going to be in the next 10 years. Right? But we have to get kids ready. So all of this leads me to this decision. I, look, if this was a, I was the biggest proponent, am the biggest proponent, because of where I come from, because I know what it means. And so I am resting largely on the fact that we are going to provide not just an okay educational experience, an excellent one. Wherever the Hills kids land, is it going to be the same as Hills? No. But we are going to wrap around kids. I will implore the administration to certainly put as much time and effort into that transition plan as possible. It's very important that we go to Hills, that teachers go down to Hills, that people know far, you know, at this point, right, from March on, that we start preparing kids for, for where they're going to land and preparing those. We, look, the kids who came in here tonight, that's one small example of stuff that happens all over our district, all over the time, at every single school. It's amazing. Our kids are amazing. And here's the last thing I'll say about the impact on kids. I've worked for a long time. I worked at the inpatient unit at UIHC for inpatient child psych. Kids are way more resilient than adults. They just are. They will deal with things. And a bus ride, that's not a make or break for folks. In fact, if you, if you really think busing is terrible, well, we're currently busing more kids. And, and why we changed the boundaries, we're busing kids to Hills. We're taking kids to Hills to Philly. We're busing them there. And we're going to bus those, those kids a shorter distance. But again, a ride on a bus, this isn't a make or break for an educational experience. Kids, somebody said, oh, they're going to meet strangers. Good. That's the point. Meet new kids. That's great. That's a great part of it, is meeting new people. That's, that's an exciting thing. That, that, to me, that's not a detriment. And those kids will thrive. They will thrive. So this, this, look, I'm passionate about this decision because I, I looked at everything. I've gone through it. I've gone, sometimes when people say, get creative, well, you know what the other districts are doing. They are going to four-day weeks. That's the big place you get your money. They're just saying, we're only going to teach you four days a week. It's happening all over rural Iowa. If Hills had not come to Iowa City in the '60s and you went to another district, the chances are, it would have been closed a long time ago. Because you wouldn't have had that growth in the other parts of our district to subsidize it. Right? And, and those are all sort of realities. It's not pleasant. I, I am sorry for it. It's a terrible decision, and so are the other decisions. I believe Winston Churchill said, democracy is the worst form of government, except all the other ones that have been tried. This is a terrible decision, but it's less terrible than the other decisions we have to face. So I am going to vote to close Hills tonight.
With that, I want to take a moment to thank the fellow directors up here with me for sharing their thoughts in their deliberation process regarding the important undertakings that we've been tasked with here tonight, with not only closing Hills, but the other budget reductions that we will have to vote on immediately after this. I also want to thank those of you that wrote in and showed up two weeks ago and tonight to voice your concern with the proposal of closing Hills as well as those other budget reductions. I can sincerely empathize with the distress, anger, frustration, hate, and distrust that all of our impending decisions has caused, not only for our students, their families, the community of Hills, but the entire ICCSD. Because our decisions tonight will impact our entire system. I won't rehash how we got here, because I'm sure we all heard it tonight and heard it in emails, responses that some of you received. And I realize that doesn't change the reality of what we are faced with tonight and what many of you are feeling tonight. I will say, as an elected member of this board, I take full responsibility for the part that we played in these circumstances. While there is plenty of blame to go around, I know that we also must accept the blame that is being placed directly at our feet by those who will be directly and indirectly impacted by whatever our decisions will be. The board and administration are aware of the impact of our budget reductions and closing of schools will have on our students and staff. We also know that without additional funding or long-term sustainable financial support, the situations that we currently face today won't be resolved and will not go away. My personal fear is that this board and future boards will be faced with similar decisions that will impact additional students and families, whether that be next year, looking at possibly, I don't know, riffing, laying off teachers, laying off additional administrators. God forbid, another conversation of closing yet another school. I want to stress that whatever the outcome of tonight's decision, whether we vote tonight or deliberate to extend, no matter what that outcome is, it does rest solely on the seven of us seated at the table tonight. No one else is making that decision but the seven of us. And knowing my colleagues as I do, I know that it has and will continue to weigh heavily on us personally, no matter how we individually decide to vote. So on behalf of this board, I am truly sorry to the students, families, and community members for tough decisions we must face that has ramifications for everyone in ICCSD with every single budget reduction that we did last year, that we will do this year, and that we will do next year. Unfortunately, that's our future in reality for the next few years. With that, I would entertain a motion regarding Hills Elementary closing.
I move that we approve the closure of Hills Elementary School at the end of the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
President Malone, I'd like to move that we post, that we defer the decision about closing the Hills Elementary School until our second meeting in April. And if there's a second, I'll be happy to discuss it. If not, we will go ahead.
Currently, since there is a motion on the table with the second, we do have to proceed with that motion.
You want to, okay, I would suggest an amendment to the motion.
I don't know if we can amend that motion. Excuse me, sir. You are not at this table.
There's a motion in a second unless Lisa would choose to withdraw the motion.
I'm sorry, Kim, can you speak into the microphone?
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion if we want to consider the other motion, but if, if that's the way to, if that's the way to solve it, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So that motion, okay. That motion and that second has been withdrawn?
Okay, then, thank you, board members. Again, I would move that we defer to consideration of, of closing Hills Elementary School to our second meeting in April.
Is there a second? Hearing non, that motion fails.
I move that we approve closure of Hills Elementary School at the end of the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Is there further discussion or comments from directors? Hearing non, Board Secretary Kovan ready to vote?
All votes have been cast, and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Next up is our fiscal year budget recommendations. Superintendent Degner.
So in terms of our
I, I can, I'm sorry, ma'am. Ma'am. We cannot discuss items that's not on agenda. Thank you. Superintendent Degner.
Yes, thanks, President Malone. So part of our work with our budget reduction process, if you remember, is a total of $5.5 million. So obviously, we just spent a tremendous amount of time on $1.6 million of that reduction. What you have in front of you there was an updated worksheet that includes the other proposed reductions.
All right, Superintendent Degner.
Do you want me to wait for a minute?
We're going to go ahead and just take a couple of minutes break to allow those to leave. Because other audience members are having a hard time hearing you. Okay, Superintendent Degner.
Thanks again, President Malone. So part of our work in this budget reduction process is planning for fiscal year '25. That's been the bulk of what we've discussed here at the, at the table the last few months. And so part of that recommendation, of course, was the last agenda item, the 1.66 million in the closure of Hills to accomplish part of that 5.5. But the rest of those recommendations are also there in front of you tonight. There's an updated worksheet that is included there on the specific reduction recommendations. The one edit, maybe since the last time we had some in-depth conversation on this, was the one-time savings for delaying curriculum purchases. There was some questions that you guys may have, I believe you replied on the answer to that about what curriculum that would be, or that we discussed it at the last meeting. That was going to be elementary math. But as we looked at that $1 million line item, we were able to piece together some relief from homeschool assistance program, Title I, an additional allocation taken from the teacher quality budget, which would be part of next year's budget rather than just the carryover, and then a smaller curriculum delay of $180,000 that would make up that $1 million. And so that would still allow us to move forward with some of those curriculum resources, take advantage of some carryover allocations or redistribute some funds to the general fund to support that. So I did want to draw attention to that. It's different than what had been suggested or presented to you in the past. But you see some of the other items on there that we've discussed extensively before about teacher leadership program modification, the position reduction through nonelementary early retirements, canceling the August TQ Day, ESC administrative reduction. That one got some attention tonight, and a lot of you referenced that in some of your comments about how we've reduced positions for administrative positions. And more, more significantly than that, up to $1.5 million out of the Ed Service Center over the last two years. And so I do think we've tried to be lean in our effort to support building-based positions and continue to, I guess, reduce members of our team out here at ESC in a, in a fairly significant way. Reduced building suballocations, the RAM adjustments that have been mentioned, position reduction through non-early retirement or non-retirement. That would just be folks that are leaving our system that we're not backfilling. And then finally, probably another large one on here for folks is the employee insurance contribution that I know you all have asked a lot of questions about, and, and we've all expressed some concern around. But as, as we continue to see some competing costs of that, on that insurance fund and some of the work we shared with you at the last Financial Oversight Committee meeting, we feel like that recommendation is also supported with good information that doesn't further impact either staff jobs or reduced academic experience for our kids. So with that, I'd entertain any questions. Otherwise, we're seeking your approval of those items tonight and would like to actualize those as soon as possible.
Directors, additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question on the insurance contribution piece. You know, kind of going back to earlier, this is another one of those things. We, we've had a sweet deal for a super long time. And I've supported that. You guys know I've supported that on both sides of the negotiating table. And just for some context, I think typically, right, a person would expect to contribute 15% of an insurance plan cost. a person would expect to contribute 15% of an insurance plan cost, an employee, and an employer would pick up 85, so a normal 85-15 split. Here in Iowa City School District, it's 95-5. So we're asking employees to put in about 5%, and we cover the 95. So that's another area where we're very rich in our benefit, which has been great. And the other thing is, folks should know, we've got a Cadillac insurance plan. It's one of the best you can get. It's nice. The copays are low, the deductibles. So as we... The health insurance committee, which I'm a part of, kind of considers all of those different factors. Okay, my question for tonight is, we've got it listed out here as 50 a month for employees with a single plan and 40 a month for our classified staff. I think, Adam, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've said that maybe we... Those aren't hard and fast, that we have some room to really talk about. Because, you know, we know there's going to be an impact, right? But we've talked here at the board table, we've talked in the committee. What we don't want necessarily to happen is for folks to see less money in their paycheck, depending on how negotiations turn out. That's one thing. And the other thing is being very sensitive to... $40 a month for our classified staff is going to hit a lot harder for them than the 50 a month for certified staff. So being sensitive to who this is going to impact the most. And I just... Just because we're voting on it, I don't want to vote on... I don't want to say it's going to be that amount for contribution. I'm more than ready to vote that there will be an employee contribution. That's something for a single plan. Maybe the public doesn't know, for our single employees, they don't pay anything for their health insurance plan. Families do pick up the full amount for a family plan. I just want to leave the board and admin, frankly, room to come up with the specific how much that contribution will be. So I don't know if we can just strike the...
I think the actual document that's on here says exact contributions yet to be determined. The one that we're actually voting on.
Oh, am I... What am I looking at?
We probably... We attached the older one to JP to kind of give the historical of this. And so probably the one you're just looking at in front of you is the last version. So I do think that's important to clarify. That was feedback you guys had provided to us that we may not necessarily be set on what those splits are. But so really, tonight, we're seeking your permission to achieve $770,000 in savings through employee contributions with a model really yet to be determined with some of those tenants that Director Clausen talked about, about knowing we would really like to see people not take home less money next year than they did this year. But the specifics of that, yeah, we're still, yeah, in process of, still have negotiations to consider with some of that. But we would, yeah, reserve the right to, you know, not have those exact contributions determined this evening.
So I'll take that back. I'm still glad I made comments because I do think people don't... As far as transparency goes, people don't know that, how rich that benefit is. And again, it's just one of those areas we're looking... You know, we've been used to one thing for a long time, and that will be a change for employees, and we want to be sensitive to that, even though maybe a lot of people, they're, "Well, what do you mean? I pay this for my health insurance," and they might not get that. We have, in the effort to keep and, you know, and recruit good teachers, we've had that rich health insurance plan.
Superintendent Degner, looking at the item position reduction through non-retirement staff attrition. I may have missed your discussion of this, but those positions will not be teaching positions. Am I correct in assuming that?
Yeah, so those are positions we're targeting. Primarily, we're figuring, yes, teaching FTE there, but it could also include some other roles that we just would not backfill if people left. So for example, if we had a custodian leave and we could cover that without filling that position, we would count that as part of the savings of $450,000 there.
But again, we're not looking at teaching positions in that reduction proposal, right? Or am I wrong about that?
No, some of those still would be teaching positions, Charlie. Yes.
But it would be not... It wouldn't be riffing a current teacher.
It's not riffing, I understand that, yeah.
Not filling a position.
Yes, thank you. We're just simply not backfilling a position. So we're not eliminating anybody's role that way. It would just be if somebody naturally left that we'd consider not replacing that position.
So unfortunately, we're still having to consider reduction of teaching staff, teachers overall, right? Thank you.
Superintendent Degner, I was wondering if you'd detail out for the community the cuts at the ESC. I know you sent us to an email form, so I forwarded it back to you. So it'd be at the top of your email if you need it.
No, that's okay. I thought I had a sheet here that walked through it a little bit, too. So we had 17 positions overall equalling a $1.5 million savings over the last two years. Four of those were administrative positions that we no longer filled. And so as you've noticed, there's, you know, a few of the chairs out here. And I know that's an easy one for people to come to in budget cuts, but we talk about a $200 million general fund, and a million and a half of that reduction has happened just on the central office team. One of the best things about working here is the high expectations that are in the district. But there's high expectations. We're expected to turn around a lot of work. And so we're doing that, I believe, and we're still finding success with that. But it's not only the administrators. Those other 12 positions that we talk on there, or 13 positions we talk about on there, we have a rotating receptionist now at the desk. When you come in, you guys probably, when you've come in for your check-ins, have noticed there's different people that we're covering those roles with. Those positions also include specialist positions that would support some of the day-to-day tasks of the job, even from the things about rectifying receipts in the organization or making orders or fielding sub... Filling subpositions for us. And so you think about specialist technician positions, secretarial roles for us. Those have all been things we've taken advantage of in our reduction strategies this year to make sure that we are able to first fill the building's needs. And so when they've had an opening come up, we've been taking people from our district office and placing those folks into those jobs. You can imagine that's not always wildly popular, right, with folks? They interviewed for and applied for and had a job out here at central office. But that's been the work we've been doing and that we've been trying to work through. And then we don't backfill those roles here, right? That we just try to cover it and pick it up. So I know you wanted me to go through those specifics there, Director Lingo. And sorry, I can't find that sheet right now. But those are really the positions it encompasses. When you think about administrators, you'd have technicians, you'd have specialists. And now I just blanked on the last one again.
I think Director Lingo actually has the list.
Yeah, the list out.
You want to help me out? Throw me the assist?
Yeah, I forwarded it to your email, but I'll just go through it. For ESC movement, reassignments, front desk specialist, specialist, tech secretary, special ed specialist, two other specialists, and the EIS avid coordinator. For reductions this year, we have a technician, deputy superintendent, assistant director of equity, director of technology and innovation, teaching and learning coordinator, a receptionist, the tech innovation secretary, I'm guessing that is, special education specialist, ESC coordinator, equity specialist, youth and family specialist. And then possibly for FY '25, I don't know if you want me to go through those ones or not, but...
Yeah, but I think you see some targeted roles for us to potentially look out there, look for there. Thank you for not sharing those yet, as, you know, some of those things aren't decided or haven't necessarily been communicated. But as you can tell, I think we continue to look for efficiencies on our team as well. And thanks for going through the list. And you can... I think the theme that you get from Director Lingo's email is, whether it's equity, whether it's technology, whether it's teach and learning, whether it's the business office and accounting, all of those teams are impacted, right? And it's not just trying to take a share of that from any one spot, which I think is also reflected in our overall budget reduction strategy, that it can't just come in one place. It's got to come in multiple places, some places, of course, heavier than others. But I do think back to the original two tenants we tried to approach the last two years in our budget reductions. As many of you shared, we're trying to protect our people and our programs. Student programming, we want to continue to offer those high-level experiences for our kids and make sure they can access all those programmings. That's what makes the ICCSD great, is that we have an enormous continuum of experiences for our kids and the fact that we have the best staff. And so we want to keep those best staff members and those best teachers in our classrooms in front of our kids. And I think we've been able to accomplish that with these recommendations.
Thank you. Before I call for a motion, I just want to reiterate that unfortunately, this is our new reality. For me, this is the third major budget cut that I have had to do during my tenure. I pray that by the time I get off, November 2025, I don't have to do it again. But something tells me that will not be the case. So to our families, I sincerely apologize. Times are going to be tough. To the administrators looking in my face, I'm sorry. You will be asked to do more with little. And to the teachers that I see out there, I don't know what to say. You are the backbone of our district. We ask you to please stand with us, knowing that we are trying our best to support you. I know it's hard. Trust me, I hear it. It's hard to have 32 kids in an art room. I don't know what else to say, but we are sincerely sorry, and we are trying to protect at least your positions. With that, I would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the FY '25 budget recommendations as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, Board Secretary Kovan ready to vote?
Online voting is open. All votes have been cast, and the motion carries with all directors voting in favor.
Next up is our legislative update. We had our legislator forum this past Friday. We have one more forum on April 12th. And Superintendent Degner, I don't know if you had comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, it's probably not something we want to dive into tonight. I think you guys are all pretty familiar with some of the proposals surrounding the AAs and the services that the district has traditionally been provided from the AAs and now some potential changes to that plan. There was a new bill approved today down in Des Moines. And so I think our next steps will be, of course, wanting to analyze what that means for us here in Iowa City and what our potential options or choices may be. And I think that'll also be hard to articulate here in the near future because of some of the way the bill is written and I think some of the work the AA has ahead of them. For example, the first year, AAs are still going to be allocated 40% of those media and ed service dollars. Well, what will be in those... What does that mean? The district is able to do with that 40% and in an agreement with the AA? And then what do we do with the other 60% of those dollars? So I think there's a lot of learning that'll happen. I know there's a lot of fear in the system in regards to this issue, too, and what level of service continues to get provided for entitled kids and what that means for local districts. So a lot more to come on that one, of course. Included in that was some teacher pay increases and then also SSA of 2.5%. And so I think there'll be a lot for us to unpack there in the near future and get you guys up to speed on.
Hey, ma'am, if you guys have this, or Adam, off the top of your head, how much... So could you say quickly, how much do we spend on special ed services to the AA? What's our flow-through for special ed? And then what's the flow-through from us for the media services? Do we know, or is that...?
We're roughly five, right, for the special ed services, Adam? And then our ed and media service dollars total of about $3 million.
Okay.
Again, I think for us to determine, okay, how far is that going based on the level of service we're getting now, what are we going to be without? For example, one question for us, it could be science curriculum right away. A lot of our elementary science curriculum's been provided from the AA. Probably a good chance for us to look at that. But at the same time, we might incur that whole expense now on our own. And what's that mean then for our budget planning? So a lot of work to do, like I said there, but that's some rough figures.
With that, we will move to agenda setting. I'm sorry, Director Lingo.
No, I'm going for agenda setting.
Oh, okay. Our first meeting on April 9th will be the Financial Oversight Committee meeting, and I believe we will continue our budget reduction discussions.
Yeah, sorry.
No, I was just looking... Is that the part you wanted to talk to or our full board meeting?
The full board meeting.
Okay. So that Financial Oversight Committee meeting will start at 5:00 in the back of the boardroom. And immediately following that, at 6:00, will be our regularly scheduled board meeting. We have our normal standard items, standing items, as well as a public hearing. We'll see the 700 series again, annual audit report, a couple of action items, and Director Lingo.
I don't know necessarily for this meeting, but I would like to get something placed on the agenda for a future meeting on the one-to-one laptop program, especially at the elementary and junior high levels. I've received about 10 comments within the past three weeks about it. So I think it's on the forefront of a lot of parents' minds.
So I don't know if our team can be ready by the night.
Not necessarily next week, but within the next...
Yeah, but no, I mean, that would be something that I think directors would like to engage administration with.
I'm not sure we'd be ready for the 9th either because I think part of what we'd want to do or make sure you guys had some good information on in that conversation is what our, you know, what our teachers and our leaders are saying about that and, you know, the educational needs, some of the other concerns that we have presented to. So we want to do a good job with that one. I do think that's a timely and important conversation for us to have. So we'll look forward to that one. The other thing I wanted to just maybe mention, President Malone, about the Financial Oversight Committee meeting is connecting back to that consent agenda item when we talked about the middle schools. That's where we'd like to probably include that follow-up update there again with you and talk about timeline and what some of those decision points might be.
And I know we'll do that at the Financial Oversight meeting, but potentially can we also have that at this table? Because oftentimes, folks don't listen to our recordings, but they watch the meetings, if that makes sense?
Sure. And we could even just put it there in the regular meeting if you guys would prefer to have it there. I think that makes sense. And there's probably a better accounting we could do about even some of the site-specific issues if we put it in that public meeting and talk about, hey, where did we start? Where'd we get to today, and what are some of those reasons for that?
Both of them are public. I just mean that the way it's delivered, okay. Any additional...
I just had a question, real quick, clarifying on that. I could email this, but do we use... In C-RABs, we have GoGuardian. Do we have GoGuardian or another kind of monitoring software?
We do not generally for credit recovery coursework. We do use GoGuardian.
Okay.
But we don't use it anywhere else. We did a pilot several years ago at Wickham Elementary.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.